Public meetings order.
Uh, this public hearing is being held for the pro schedule of values for the twenty twenty-five reappraisal. I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Ash, Tax Administrator.
Good afternoon. I had presented the schedule of values for market and present use value for upcoming reappraisal on September third. Um, to date, I have not received any concerns from anyone, any calls, and no one's come to inspect it. Uh, that's pretty common. Uh, and I also do not see anyone signed up, um, for comment. Uh, but I did want to take a second, if I had an opportunity, and introduce, um, you all to Kevin Ford. He is our reappraisal coordinator. He's been with us since two thousand and two, and this is his fifth revow for Jackson County. He's also does Macon Counties. Um, he started nineteen eighty-six, and he's done ten North Carolina Counties and five Virginia and twenty-seven revows altogether. We just added them up. So, uh, he's a welcome to the lodge, so we're very fortunate to have him helping us out. So, um, unless anyone, any of you had any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Um, but if not, I would like to move this to be adopted next meeting on the fifteenth.
Questions from the board?
So move.
All right. Second?
Second.
Well, we got to close our session. Do we take a vote on this?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, all right. Is there a motion to close, close session?
Tell me, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? And then we got one minute. Kevin, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Call our meeting to order. Uh, first up tonight, seek a motion for approval of the agenda. If there are no amendments to be made, we did have one, uh, redaction for the proclamation.
So move, Chairman.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Uh, moving on now to our minutes. We had a public hearing for the U D O amendment September seventeen. Public hearing for transit grants and our regular meeting. If there are no, uh, needs for amendments to those minutes, I'll seek a motion for approval of the three.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? All right. Moving on now to administrative reports. Chairman report. Um, I'd just like to send out a, a, a big, big, big thank you to, um, Todd Dillard, Director of our E O C, um, all the firemen, police, uh, Sheriff's Office, and the volunteers that have really just stepped up during this last week, helping everyone. And especially Kevin King, who was there day and night trying to, um, fill any needs necessary. And all the county staff that stepped in and were working at, um, distribution centers, uh, just cooking everything. Uh, I can't say enough for everything in this county. I mean, I know we still have some without power, but, um, the linemen worked tirelessly, and they're still going, getting ready to head down to Florida now. But, uh, just thank you all very much. Um, it, it, it's wonderful to see a community really just step up and help each other, neighbor and neighbor. Whether you knew them or not, so that's all I have to report this week. Any other commissioners?
I want, I want, just like Mark said, I want to thank all the staff. Thank you, Kevin, for taking all my calls. Every, every minute until the phones went out, but I feel like all the staff done a, done a fine job. We, we responded well. That's good. But, uh, our communities, different communities, they took a, took a hit, and we were very fortunate and blessed that the storm wasn't moved over just a little bit. But my thoughts and prayers are with, with the folks in our community that's lost things and lost their, you know, their homes or had damages to their homes. But, uh, my heart really goes out to, uh, our other counties in western North Carolina for, for all they've lost. It's, it's, it's very sad. So my thoughts and prayers are with all those people.
I'd like to thank the food services, uh, that kept our staff at U C Fed, uh, and other staff. They worked tirelessly as well. The, the other counties are devastated on if you've driven, driven outside the killing. But it's like a war zone in some places. You just can't imagine the damage. Just keep them in your prayers and continue to donate what you can. If you can donate time, do that.
I'd like to echo what Chairman Letson said about staff and, and Mr. King. Grounds crew department phenomenal job and support. The, um, what really has impressed me was, is our airport.
Yeah.
There's been almost four hundred flights of aircraft, various sizes into that airport. A small plane can handle about two hundred and fifty to three hundred pounds, or a hundred and fifty to two hundred pounds of material. The larger planes can go up fifteen hundred to two thousand pounds. We had four hundred fly in. And, uh, you know, I know there's some scuttle about the, what the national, uh, federal government's doing, but we had seven Chinook helicopters land at the airport. Each one contained ten pallets of food and water. And this, all this material has been going to, uh, Bat Cave, Bernardsville, Henderson County, in staging areas for when they get bridges so they can access some of these people that are being stranded for two weeks. When they get the road fixed, then these materials will be on, on their site for easily distribution. I couldn't, and, and when I was up there yesterday, and Ms. Henry, um, was up there as well, but the, there was sixteen to seventy volunteers. And what they were doing, and I've, I've talked to citizens who said, yeah, my, my children, they've done this too on volunteer. As a plane would pull in, they would form a cha- chain of individuals, and the last person would be at the trailer that was going to transport the material, uh, food and water, and insulin. I mean, it's everything you can imagine was on those planes. One couple, anyway, to, I tried to go get my phone out of the car to take a picture of them, a video of them moving. And by the time I got back, that plane was empty. That's how fast it, it was. And the volunteers from anywhere, I, I just couldn't believe it. There was one couple, a young couple, um, two pilots. They made twenty-two trips to Jackson County Airport and, um, bringing food from Lincolnon, uh, Lincolnon County or Lincoln County, one or the other. And, um, they were doing it to get hours. So, because more of hours you fly, you have the, the insurance goes down or something. It's above my pay grade. But they were just doing it for hours, and there were, some pilots, when I was up there, said this would be their last trip. Um, I mentioned to Mr. King, I wish we'd had a camera up there earlier to take some videos, so like we do at the aquatic center. We can see, see what's really going on. Then you see the importance of what that airport has done in a particular emergency, and much less the normal economic activity that we, that we support through the airport authorities. So I, I just want to say, we, oh, we're actually, our airport is the hub of activity. And Macon County's helping too, of west of this event. Uh, that's how important this airport, and, and these, I can't tell you how many states we had planes come from. And, um, there was even, somebody even set up a, a GoFundMe page for fuel for these pilots. They're not using their own money. Uh, some of them are supported. So it, it's just incredible. It was very moving. Uh, I just came from a twosome meeting and what their staff did throughout this event. You know, some of the staff went four and five days with no, no sleep. I mean, uh, and I happened to be in Silver Monday. I saw Daniel Mannering, and I told him at the meeting today, I said, when he came out, I, I happened to go, go and by there to pick up some papers. And he, uh, I, I saw him, and we spoke real briefly. He was on his way to the E O C, uh, for, for a meeting. And I told him at the meeting just a moment ago, I said, by the way, on Monday, you look pretty rough. That's my exact words. And he did. But I just want kudos to the staff and the county. It, it, you know, the pride can be a double-edged sword, but the, the county made us proud.
Yep. Moving on now to, uh, Kevin King and our county manager report.
So, one, I just wanted to kind of ditto your remarks. Um, I did want to kind of name some folks that were kind of behind the scenes. Actually, pretty much all county staff stepped up, but I'm gonna specifically name them. So Todd Dillard, of course, and his staff. All the nine-one dispatchers, they were, they were troopers because our nine-one center was down for many days. And so, Onle County and Union County, it's all our nine-one calls. We're very fortunate to have those as backups. Of course, all of our fire departments, first responders, Sheriff's Office, the Public Works Department, um, they are really, we are really blessed to have all those employees, um, that, that stepped up. Uh, for our shelters, uh, D S S, Veteran Services, E D C, eight, I'm sorry, that's not the shelter. Help Department, D S S, uh, Department of A G ran our shelters for us. They did a fantastic job until they were closed down. And the E, A O, E O C, of course, we had Veteran Services, E D C, um, we had Health Department staff, D S S staff working at the E O C the entire time. The Bill Inspection Tax Office got involved because we had to do an assessments of all the homes. There's six point five million dollar worth of damage, you know, to homes in, in our community. So they, they stepped up and helped out with that. Special shout out to the, uh, Swiftwater teams that we had staged before hand, which was, uh, the city of Winston-Salem, the city of Monroe, State Highway Trail, Swiftwater. And then we had a few emergency manager personnel, I'd like to mention, uh, Bradley Kinsall from Harnett County, Ira Whitford from Craven County, and Rachel Johnson, she's in Beaufort County, or Beaufort County in North Carolina. And then, um, so at all of this, transcend, you see the amount of people. Now the switch is over, so you're gonna have Darlene and her staff kind of working all of that. All the people who spent some, to try to work with FEMA and other partners to try to get some, recoup some funding, not only for public assistance, but also individual assistance. So we're gonna be opening a FEMA office down at the Western Billings building, which we have rented for two months. And, uh, with that said, we've got debris removal going on. So anybody that has debris, you need to take it through right the way of a state road. That's debris that has been caused by the storm, you need to take it to the state road. If you have C and D, if you can separate that out in two different piles, one vegetation and one C and D, or construction demolition material, then you only put that in two separate piles, and we will have a contractor come around and pick that up for you. So that's the P, P S A for today.
Did, um, I know this is, is, what makes me especially proud is that no one was seriously injured or, you know, deceased in this storm. I know there were some wrecks. Um, I had one employee wound up in ICU from his wreck, but, uh, I mean,
Yeah.
We're, we're blessed.
Definitely blessed. And the Swiftwater team, I can't say enough, uh, they, they worked tirelessly. Uh, they saved, um, or they rescued over three hundred people. Uh, which, you know, and so, so we were very fortunate to have those staged. So, um, Angie has letters to go out to all those individuals that were not in, in our county. But, you know, definitely a big thank you, and, and I'm just proud of all the employees. They, they really all stepped up, and we all came together as a team, and that's what it's all about. So. But that's all I have for today.
Any informal comment?
Yep.
All right. First up tonight, we have Ms. Rowan, uh, wanting to talk about animal control.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for giving me time to speak. Um, I'm not sure. I've not done this before, so I'm not sure what I'm allowed and what I'm not allowed. I'm assuming I'm allowed, not allowed to give specific names. Could that be correct? Okay. So I'll just refer to people in generalities if that would be good. I live in Jackson County. I've been here for thirty years. I've recently had an incident at my house involving animals, which is why I'm speaking about animal control. Uh, my original contact to them was in July, July twenty-fourth. Um, I filed a report. They came out, went to my neighbor. Never came to my property, never got information directly from me. They decided to close the case, even though there were animals that were killed, and just named it a nuisance. And then moved on from that. I had another incident on the third of October where I had another animal killed on my property. And this time, I did not want to hear them tell me, we're not coming out, we're not doing this, we're not doing that. And so I reached out to everyone I could think of. Finally reached a commissioner who helped me to make sure that somebody actually came to my house. They did go to my neighbors first, um, before coming to my house, did not get full information from me about the event. Which leads me to what I really want to tell you today, which is, they have picked up the wrong dog in this incident. Because they did not get the full information from me, because they did not speak to me and look back on reports that have been taken over the past few months. My neighbor, as a way to not give up the dogs that he doesn't want to give up, handed over a dog that was not involved. And so there is a dog sitting in the shelter today that had nothing to do with any of the killings. What I would like is an actual face-to-face meeting to sort all of this out. Starting with looking at the policies, why, when there were deaths to animals, in addition to myself being cornered aggressively by dogs, why was it only marked as a nuisance? Why would I ask for these cases to be left open because of concern for my safety? I was refused. Why the next time that something happened, I had to go to such great lengths to get them to actually speak to me? And even then, they didn't get all the full information in order to provide me and my family with safety and protection.
The dog's still on the property?
Yes. There are three dogs that were involved in numerous killings of animals. They are all three on his property. He handed over an older German Shepherd that rarely leaves his house. Um, and I, I have verified this. I've had somebody go out to the animal shelter to verify which dog they picked up. In addition to looking over the reports that I have copies of, that names the animal that they picked up, it was not the correct animal. Um, Animal Control is not communicating with me. They're not giving me clear information. I have, like I said, I've had a lot of animals killed on my property. And so, looking back at the beginning, my understanding, I just don't understand why this was ever only marked as nuisance when there are clear policy guidelines of when a dog is considered dangerous.
Okay. Um, we'll see if we can get to the bottom of it for you.
Um, I would like to submit written information.
Sure.
Um, how would I find out how to do that?
Um, you can email it to us, or you can email Ms. Winchester, our clerk, and she can send it to us.
Okay.
And, um, from there, we can, we can start the communication process and hopefully get this problem resolved for you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Sure. Um, next up, we have Ms. Mitchell. Good evening.
Thank you for listening to me. Um, I also want to start by saying thank you to town leadership and management, our emergency services. I agree with you all, um, town employees, everyone did a fantastic job starting the rescue and, and crisis response on a local level. I'm super, super proud of the kind of people that, that I live amongst and the community we have. I saw something else as a, a citizen than I want to represent on behalf of our citizens. At one end of town, while we were at Mark Watson Pot, uh, distributing things and donations that had been dropped in for our citizens in need. At the other end of town, a mother with her two young children and her mother had a sign on the bed of their pickup, collecting donations to take down to others who were in need more of us. And that's the kind of special people we live amongst. We are, um, even in the midst of a crisis, in a situation like that, when we are in need of help, we are at the opposite end of town gathering help to send to someone else who needs it more than us. And, and that's the kind of people I'm proud to be amongst. So I said that to say, what I wanted to speak to you about is the closure of the steps to the courthouse. So two background bits of information, just for the relevance, not the topic of conversation. I understand that there is a prior conversation about the steps in the statue particularly. I understand that there is a bit of a thing with the town with regards to the, uh, Pride Parade and that community. Said for reference, not to readdress those subjects. I have noticed twice recently that the steps to the courthouse, the old courthouse and the library, were closed off when there were public events. I'd never noticed it before. So I come first saying, i- if there's a policy, I'm wondering how I can find out what it is. Um, if there's a justifiable reason, I'm certainly ignorant of and asking about. I'm not making a declaration of, of what is clearly the case, because I don't know. Um, but I'd like to know, because my observation is that it was closed off at the Jun- Juneteenth celebration on June nineteenth, at which there was also a potluck for the Pride community in Silver Bridge Park. The steps were also closed off at the Pride Festival this past, uh, couple of weekends back. Now, if, to me, as a citizen, I support those things regardless. I'm not here as a citizen who supports those things. I'm here as a citizen who goes through town and sees an icon that we are nationally recognized for, closed off with caution tape. And my first thought and instinct is that is to protect the statue from this community who is in our town right now, holding festivals and holding, holding, uh, events. If there's a reason for that, if this particular community has, uh, some sort of particular threat, uh, again, it may be justifiable, and I don't know. But if not, what I see is that we are sending a message to everyone in town, everyone who visits town, that we have something to fear from the people who are in our town this weekend. And we don't have anything to fear from that community. They are different. And I understand a lot of people aren't okay with that. But there is a difference between as a community not being okay with something and not wanting to see something change, and not wanting to see a Pride Parade in town that you're not used to seeing. There's a difference between that and, and just downright bullying. And if this is in fact something that is being done because that community is in town, without really being warranted or without having a set policy across the board, like I would ask, is it going to be closed off when W C U homecoming is in town and we have a parade? And I don't know if that's a county thing or if that's a town thing the county allows. But what it does is it sends a signal and it sends the message that we have something to fear from that community, and there's no reason for us to be sending that message. And because clearly it's being closed off by people in a position of authority, by appearances, against people who are not in a position of authority, that is a bullying tactic, especially when there's no cost for it. So if that's the reason for it, I absolutely hate that that is what we're representing to anyone who looks at our icon. This was recent time. I'm a member of an organization. We had state and potentially nation, national figureheads, uh, in town who had seen that, those steps in some of our local videos and chapters that were posted nationwide, and were eager to see them and couldn't access them. And we had to explain why they were closed, or why we thought they were, because I really wasn't sure. Lastly, if you're interested in show and tell, I'll bring it up. But I, um, was cleaning my utility room today, and I found this. And it was kind of relevant to what I wanted to speak about tonight, so I brought it with me. I was cleaning. I was looking for a tool. I needed something, and I just kind of found this thing, and it was the perfect tool, and it did exactly what I needed it to do. And I looked at it closer, and I realized this is a screw that was not properly made, so it's just a shaft. It's not got the threads or anything to it. Very rare. Only one in the box. Never seen one in my life. Very, very rare. As far as being a screwdriver, it's not like many of the others, and it would do a pretty lousy job as a screw. Just because it is different doesn't make it invaluable or worthless. It was an extremely valuable tool to me today and will be on numerous occasions. It's special. It's rare. It's different, but it does not pose a danger or a threat. If you're interested in seeing it, I don't know if that's allowed or if you're interested, but.
Um, and more, I'm not sure why it would have been closed, but we can figure out why. I, I mean, it's, there's no ordinance that, that says it needs to be closed for anything. So I'll, I'll see if we can fight, figure out why.
I appreciate that. It just seems that, uh, there's a relevant threat. That's, that's one thing. But if there's not, then getting damaged that there is. Um, sure doesn't seem like the impression that we want to present.
Right.
Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Um, moving on now to. Um, moving on now to, uh, new business and food service contract.
So we did have to go out for bid for a, um, a new service contract for our kitchen. That both, that served both their Department of Aging and their jail services. And this is a similar contract. There was number four, we did have two bidders. Uh, one in the skillet, uh, which is our current matter and the other is a co-will. Um, which was a new one. We went through the analysis of the bids and I determined skillet was the low bidder. And if you look at section. B. This will be the, the current pricing model. Uh, we are, uh, on the, on the skillet. For the jail we're at, um, in this number here, two ten to two thirty-nine. And it'll be five dollars and thirty-five cents. Um, and Department of Aging, it will be. Five dollars and eighty-two cents. It's two hundred and two fourteen. And so they were low. Uh, the low bidder and the, uh, jail mills. And Department of Aging mills, they were a few cents higher. But cumulatively between the two, uh, they were the low bidder overall. So. I would recommend, uh, that the board approve this contract and it will be for a four-year contract. And, um, it'll have all the same provisions as we've had in the past. It's an identical contract. Other than they will not be able to cater out of this facility, which was one of the requests of Department of Aging folks.
Is there a motion to approve the food service contract? Or is there any questions you should say?
Was it the timing of this agreement just because the contract expired?
Yeah, it expired actually on, uh, September thirtieth. So, um, we're about seven days in. Uh, we didn't have time with the, you know, with the, the event. We didn't have time to get it through last week.
All in favor? Opposed? None? Motion case. Moving on now to our twenty twenty-five holiday schedule.
I'll have a link.
No holidays.
I'm pretty sure it's the sta- standard eleven holidays. So it'd be the same standard we've done in the past. Would start January first and you'll have three for Christmas, two for, um, two for November or two for Thanksgiving. Uh, Veterans Day on the eleventh of November. Um, Labor Day, Fourth of July, Memorial Day. Yeah.
Good Friday.
Good Friday.
Martin Luther King Junior Day, January twentieth, and then New Year's Day. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the holiday schedule? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Moving on now to legislation and we have an offer to purchase. In contract, lot thirty-four.
So we did, uh, receive an offer to purchase from. Wilson Roberto Junior, uh, three thousand three hundred sixty dollars for lot number thirty-four. Um, fourteen of Holly Forest subdivision. So this one has been. I think it was foreclosed on twenty twenty-three. Yeah, eleven twenty twenty-three. And as you can see, some of them have sold, we sold one in November twenty twenty-three for three thousand three hundred forty. Um. In the same subdivision. So that, in my mind, would be a fair offer and I would recommend that y'all approve this to go through the process of the bidding.
Motion to sell it, put it back on the tax record.
Yep.
Second.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Letson?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it is pretty. Um. Is there a need to go into closed sessions tonight?
No.
Any questions from the press? With, uh, no further business, I'll seek a motion for adjournment.
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. We are adjourned. Tonight, we have, uh, Ms. Foreman from Via Health. Good evening, Shelley.
Hello. Yeah, and I just first want to say thank you so much for allowing me to, um, join by Zoom. Um, Via has been like you and surrounding counties, um, working pretty much night and day to deal with. Um, the impact of Helene. And I live in Canton, so I'm still like conserving my gas. So I appreciated that opportunity. Um, I'm gonna sort of do a hybrid meeting is, is what I thought I was gonna do a week ago. Um, I am gonna talk to you briefly about our new role. Um, uh, in, in Jackson County and, and the region we serve, but I also want to address. Some of the things we're doing, um, around, um, uh, Helene. So, uh, again, my name is Shelley Foreman. I'm the Community Relations Regional Director for Via Health. Um, I always have to give a special, uh, thank you, uh, to our Via Health Regional Board members. In Jackson County. Uh, Chairman Letson is, uh, one of our members and we appreciate his work. As well as our incoming new member, Chris Weatherford, who, who is, as you know, your Social Services Director. Who's been, um, a wonderful partner to Via. Thank you. Um, so what has changed for Via Health and for the community and people we serve since July first? So as, as some of you know, um, we've been talking about this for some years now. Um, the state of North Carolina, um, uh, probably. Six years ago, made a decision to bring all of Medicaid services under managed care. And that included physical health as well as, uh, mental health, substance use and developmental disability services. Via Health has been managing Medicaid services for folks with mental health, substance use and developmental disability services. Since two thousand and twelve. Um, but it is very new for many of our folks who get primarily physical health. Services. Um, and so as of July first. Um, Via Health is responsible for all of those same services and supports we've been responsible for in the past. But we are now also responsible for all the physical and pharmacy health needs of folks who are. In our health plan called Via Total Care. Um, so that is very different. Thank you. Next slide. Um, so what happened as of July first? What changed for Via? Um, thank you. And next slide. I appreciate you moving the slide for me. Um, so again, Via Health is a tailored plan. Um, and the state, it's interesting when they came up with managed care, we have two different kinds of plans, well, three different kinds of plans. Um, one is called a standard plan and the vast majority of, majority of members fall into standard plans. Um, because they have primary health needs as well as maybe mild. Um, to mild to moderate mental health or substance use needs. A tailored plan is a plan like Via Health, which is a public agency. Uh, we are what is called an LME MCO. And we manage more moderate to severe mental health. Substance use, intellectual developmental disability and traumatic brain injury disorders. So we still manage care for all of those things, but as I said, what is different, and you can go to the next slide. Is that there are a variety of other health services and, and providers we're now contracting with. I did, um, put this map out there for you. These are the four public agencies. We report to the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Center for Medic- and Division of Medicaid Services. Um, we are the four agencies. You can see Via Health, Ketchment area. Um, and those are the thirty-two counties that we now cover. So, um, if you go to the next slide, um, what I will let you know is that all of the folks. That are, that we are responsible for received letters. They were informed of, um. Of the changes in their health plan. They were asked to choose their primary care provider. Um, their assigned care manager, which can either be from Via Health. Or from one of our provider-based care management agencies. Um, they were able to choose and they now have a health insurance card that looks very much. Uh, like any of our health insurance cards. It says Via Health on it. Uh, next page. So I'm gonna go through some of these things and I'm going to talk a little bit about Helene. So over the last several years, we have worked very hard to contract with. Um, primary care providers, specialty care health providers, um, hospital systems. Um, both of the FQHCs, Blue Ridge, um, Health and Appalachian. Uh, Mountain Community Health Services have already been in our network. So folks now, um, are working that are in our health plan. Um, are able to use their same primary care provider. Um, if they see someone that is not yet in our network, we are able to cover those services and do outreach to that, um. Provider to make sure that they continue to get the care they need. We're still providing care, um, through our network of providers for all intellectual and developmental disability services. And all of our plan members have a care manager who works with them. Um, to be able to, um, help support them, get their healthcare needs met. Transportation needs met, um, anything that they might need, um, to really take care of their whole person. I will say one of the differences in, um, managed care that the state has moved for is it's really about whole person care. Um, helping them get not only their health and behavioral health care needs met, but also to help them with housing. Um, with stable housing, with housing repairs, um, with food, with transportation. Via is right now, um, responsible for scheduling transportation needs, um, for folks. That are in our health plan. And then I'm, I'm not sure who's running the PowerPoint. Um, I think that you can go to the next page and then I'm just going to talk after this a little bit about Helene. And we can sort of stop the PowerPoint because I know the commissioners can look through it. So again, all of the same services that we've been responsible for in the past. Child and adolescent, um, treatment services, um, enhanced services, intensive in-home. Um, uh, programs for our most seriously and persistently mentally ill. People with, um, significant substance use challenges. Um, all those services are still available. The only difference is, again, we are now responsible for their healthcare needs as well as making sure that their pharmacy needs are met. So I'm gonna stop with that and let you just sort of review some of the other information on that page. And if you don't mind, I would like to address, um, the impact of Helene. So I do know, I will say, um, I'm not sure if I was fortunate or unfortunate. I was actually on annual leave in Arizona with my family, um, when Helene came through. And didn't get back till Sunday night late. Um, so I, I missed the storm itself. Um, since I think Sunday and since, um, I have been in communication. With our counties, as you know, I serve the seven westernmost counties. Um, with key partners, trying to send them information and assess what needs they have from Via. And that would include, um, of course, Kevin, you probably were cooking, um, and didn't see some of my emails. But county manager, um, DSS Director Chris, uh, Anna at the Health Department. Uh, the sheriff EMS, just to sort of give them updates. Um, our crisis line at Via, um, stayed intact throughout the whole storm. So our access to services number was available. Um, we have been able to, um, quickly try to assess. Where our providers are with Helene. Um, we have been able to, one, uh, determine all of our states, uh, staff are now safe. Uh, many of them have experienced many of the same losses as our community members. We at Via have now, our number one, uh, really our number one priority is, uh, touching and talking to. And determining the safety of our members. Um, our tailored care managers have been doing outreach. They have been calling every member they serve. They have been calling every member they serve to, one, determine if they were safe or if they need sheltering, to determine what they needed in the way of basic food, water, resources. We went to determine that their medication needs were met, that they had prescriptions filled that they needed. And, you know, coming online has sort of been trial by fire, I will say, with doing the health needs because we have really had to identify our health plan members that were getting things like chemotherapy, oxygen, dialysis, who had really specialized needs to make sure that they had access to all of those things. We have been working with the Department of Health and Human Services, and they have been providing a lot of resources in the way of trying to get mobile medical clinics and mobile pharmacies in areas most significantly impacted. Our providers, we are working with them. In Jackson County, Meridian Behavioral Health is your comprehensive provider. Their walk-in center is open on Bonnie Lane, which is across from the Community College. The Blue Ridge Health Clinic is open, which is over across from the hospital. Our other providers, our mobile crisis management team is up and operational. And so we are really working to support our providers, our members, and now our communities in meeting your needs and meeting their needs. So what I guess I would ask of you is to let me know what resource needs the community has. We are reaching out to our members, so we've sort of got that covered and our providers. But we are collecting donations at our Buncombe County site for distribution. We have collected a truckload of things like over-the-counter medications that we can bring to you for your distribution center. I know you're getting a lot of support, you know, from the county, from donations, from FEMA, from community groups. But we are really here to help. Our main goal is to support the folks we're serving, but also to support you and the community. And I know you're going, you know, to heroic efforts. And I'm so happy that you guys are doing, you know, as best as you can be. Again, I know Jackson County has a great response. And so it sounds like Kevin and all of your agencies have been working hard. But I would be just really interested to know how we could support you and the community and how we can make sure that your needs are met as we go through this recovery together. And I'll just sort of stop there because I know you have a long agenda, but just wanted to give you an update. On one, we're going, we are now a health plan that is a whole-person health plan. And two, we really are working hard to address the needs of the health, the behavioral health needs and basic needs of our health plan members and our providers as we go through Helene.
Shelley, do you know, I know this is kind of a fluid number, but roughly how many of your members have been displaced at this time? And of that, do you know of any Jackson County members that have been displaced?
You know, that is a great question. I can ask that. We are now having a daily meeting. And I will, I do not know. I think most of the displacements happened, well, there are two kinds of displacements, right? There are displacements of people displaced and going to a shelter, and then people who are displaced from their homes who go to families or go to stay in a hotel or find another resource. I will get that number and get that back to you. I talked to our care management manager who oversees the work in Jackson County. And I know the shelter is not open in Jackson. Chris did set me, let me know that. But I will find out if we have any Jackson County residents and get that information back to you tomorrow. I'm trying to, I mean, this week has been a blur, hasn't it?
I think, yeah. The last 11 days, 12 days.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, I missed the first few. I'm sorry. It's amazing. I went from Arizona in a heat wave, where one day it got up to 110, to coming home to Helene.
Yeah. It's a shock, for sure. Any other questions about the board at this time? Thank you so much, Shelley.
And I can bring things, I know Kevin, I can't see you, but I can bring information. We're working with one of our providers to even just do informal support groups. You know, they call them listening circles. So people can touch base daily even. It's a call-in number or a virtual meeting that anyone can access. They're free of charge. So I can connect with Kevin tomorrow. I can bring Vaya Health resource materials to the distribution sites. And if you have other resource needs, I can try to get them from our distribution center as well.
Okay. And if someone wanted to make a donation, like if we had a plane coming in with OTCs that needed to go to Vaya, how would they get in contact? Do they just need to reach out to you or is there?
Yeah, I can, what I will do is I will send Kevin on our website. It's www.vayahealth, D-A-Y-A health dot com. There is, we have a sort of Helene resource page, and you can actually make donations to Vaya Health. And that goes through, and it's all, as you can see, the Helene recovery. All the donations go directly to our member needs, provider needs, and community needs. And most of the donations really are going to be for members and community. The providers have sort of bigger needs, like generators and large quantities of water and that type of thing. But we will definitely, we will be willing to accept donations for our plan members and for our communities. And we will definitely distribute those to every county that's had an impact.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.
Next, we have Mr. Reed Love from the Jackson County Sheriff's and Development Authority.
Good evening.
Hey there. Good evening. Just thank you for having me tonight. Just a few brief updates about Helene. I know it's on everybody's minds. We took last week to stabilize and make sure that our residents were taken care of before inviting visitors back. We wanted to make sure fuel supplies, groceries were stable. And then we had a careful rollout plan to welcome people back responsibly and thoughtfully into our communities. And we're already seeing them coming back, which is great news. I know our small businesses really need that support right now while being sensitive to our neighbors who were hard-hit. So we've been balancing that carefully. Our hotels in Silva and Diltsboro right now are near capacity because we're hosting so many rescue workers that are traveling to the east of us and in other areas. So finding a hotel room may be a bit challenging right now for visitors, but there's lots of options as well. And we're likely to see a lot of new faces in Jackson County as visitors come here who may have gone somewhere else on their trip. So keep that in mind as well. And about a half hour ago, I got off the phone with the superintendent who's assisting the National Forest with reopening those sites. And it looks, there'll be an announcement tomorrow, but a lot of the National Forest Service sites, they will reopen on Friday. So think Whiteside Mountain, White Water Falls. A few of the campgrounds may not as they're assessing damage. But they're letting people know, we hear you loud and clear. You want to refuge and you want to get outdoor in nature. And so Nana Halo will open first, and then they'll assess Pisgah and other locations after that. So that's really positive news. The Blue Ridge Parkway is a little bit slower in assessment of damage. So that's on the horizon, but we're not there yet with the Parkway. Before you, you have our TDA Board's request related to the occupancy tax. And historically, we've been at 4% since the TDA was established. We went from 3% to 4%. And throughout my tenure with the TDA, most years we collected around 1 million. And then after COVID, we started collecting significantly more. Also, when High Hampton came back online, that increased our collections quite a bit. So right now, that brings in about 2.5 million every year. And with capital projects like we've done recently in partnership on the Greenway, what we've done is we're spending down that COVID surplus that we have in our budget. So once we exhaust that surplus, we won't be able to do any capital projects without affecting our marketing to bring people here. So the request you have before you is to, it's no burden to the Jackson County taxpayer. It's, it benefits the Jackson County residents, but it's no burden on Jackson County's residents. But we're asking for that 2% increase to put us in a competitive stance with our neighboring counties who are either at or going to 6%. We project that will generate 3.75 million annually. And what we would do is we would utilize the majority of the funds, just as we are now, for marketing 2.5 million. And we would be able to take that additional, a lot of those additional funds that come in to do more impactful projects every year. So think of that Greenway project. We'd be able to do a sizable project every year to benefit the residents. One of the projects we did earlier this year was Bridge Park, and that's being enjoyed by a lot of people at the Free Friday Night concerts, the improved parking, the green space. And we do know that some of the other things that are coming forward will be really great for our residents and visitors alike. So it's using visitor money to benefit Jackson County. And the good news is, when the TDA was established, the bill gave county commissioners the permission locally to increase that tax. So a lot of places have to go back to Raleigh and introduce legislation. You gentlemen have the power to increase that as you see fit. So that's the request that's before you today. The other request we have, and I'll be happy to answer questions on both, is to expand the eligibility for our TDA Board. In past years, it was easy to draw members to our board. Our categories were hotel, 10 rooms or more in North Jackson, hotel, 10 rooms or more in South Jackson. The challenge is, a lot of the hotels consolidated under the same ownership, so we don't have board members to pull from. And it's challenging to get a quorum at many meetings to be able to conduct business. There's times where someone may be sick or on vacation, and we almost can't hold a meeting. And we definitely need the ability to move forward with items. So really, this would create what's called a hospitality and tourism category. Our first preference would be on hoteliers. But if we can't get a hotelier in that role, then our second preference would be moving down for broader representation and those key people in the industry that understand hospitality and tourism. And what we've done is we've worked with, it's very similar board structure to our previous board structure. But, you know, it goes down in preference. First, we have lodging partners who truly understand this industry. But then we've also lost people from the lodging industry to real estate, for example. We've had people move into real estate, and then suddenly, we've got a hole in our board. But they still have significant hospitality experience and might be willing to serve us. So that's really the request before you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on either of those proposals.
Any questions from the board? I think both of these are great suggestions.
I just will take just a minute, explain for anybody watching how the tax works and how.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So when you stay in a hotel, an Airbnb, a Verbo, anywhere in Jackson County, there's a tax levied on your bills. So if your bill's $100, currently, we get $4 back. And we have to make that $4 work so hard in our budget. That 2.5 million sounds like a lot of money. But that operates our visitor centers for all of our visitors in North and South Jackson. It goes to our marketing programs, to public relations. And basically, that tax, we receive no public dollars of any sort. So that tax then enables us to bring in roughly half a billion dollars annually in visitor spending. So that 2.5 million has a multiplier effect that brings in 486 million dollars was the most recent number in visitor spending. So talk about supporting our small businesses. Tourism is the purest form of economic development. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? If not, I think there's a consensus to move this to our next meeting. It's on the agenda.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next, we have Ms. Henry from Economic Development.
Good evening. Hope y'all are doing okay. I want to just quickly give you guys an update from Economic Development. I will say, it's changed a little bit in the last week and a half, some of the stuff that we're doing. But again, I just want to echo your comments. We've had a lot of really great people step up in a lot of different ways over the last week and a half. And so it was really fun to work alongside them and watch them do their thing. So let's get into it. So again, Economic Development, Small Business, this is kind of how I run. Stop dreaming and start doing. If you know me, you know I'm a doer, so let's just kind of get to it. So mission statement, our Economic Development Office, several years ago, prior to me starting, did a comprehensive economic development strategy. A lot of stakeholders involved in that. And part of that mission statement was created, which is just this. Economic development activities in Jackson County are focused on the improvement of economic condition, increased opportunities for improving wealth, and a betterment of the overall quality of life of the people of Jackson County. And so within that work, some of our priorities are listed here. So over the last couple of years, since I've been in this role, these are some of the things that I've taken on. Housing being one of those. We've done some work, including Webster Village. We've done a housing needs assessment with our partners through the school of government. And we've done some site identification through that work. Done a lot of work with broadband. I'll talk a little bit more about some of that work. Childcare, really, we actually got interrupted because of Hurricane Helene. We had a business of childcare consultant in the area doing some stakeholder listening sessions. We did one in Silva at the Department on Aging on Tuesday. On Wednesday, we were up in Cashers. And then Thursday morning, my lead team was supposed to meet. We had to cancel that due to the weather because I have several different stakeholders on that that were having to respond to immediate needs. So we've had to postpone a little bit of that work. But we had a call this morning and continuing that work. I would say, over the last year and a half, we've done a lot in the outdoor economy space, going back to what Nick was saying with our tourism. Our outdoor assets are an economic engine. And so we recognize that. And within those assets that we have, I've led two different programs, Creating Outdoor Recreation Economies and the Building Outdoor Communities Through Mountain Biz Works. And through both of those, we've developed some strategic plans for Jackson County, obviously, the Greenway expansion and the prioritization of that, as well as the Jackson County assets that we own. Industrial development, I've also done some work with Golden Leaf, some site identification with that organization. And then retention and expansion. And this really is sort of the heart of what we do, supporting our existing businesses, working with them to help them retain their workforce, but also working with recruiting new businesses. In addition, we are in the midst of working on a business retention and expansion program to support our businesses. And we'll talk more about that in just a second. Broadband, I probably don't come up here and talk to you without talking about broadband, I feel like. But again, going back to our strategy, broadband was one of those goals that was identified, which is why I continue to sort of lead that charge. And I just wanted to give you an update. I think the last time we met, I just kind of, I felt it was important for you to kind of see the progress that has been made to this point. So ARDOF, this is again, the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund. This is a federal program operated through our FCC. That was awarded to Charter Spectrum. And out of their address points that were awarded to date, we have one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two of those address points that have been activated. Then there was a Great Grant. That one was in partnership with the state office, and Charter Spectrum was awarded Phase One of that work. And seven hundred and forty-two of those address points have been activated, putting them at sixty-four percent on that project. And then Bossam West was recently awarded Phase Two of a Great Grant, and they have activated twenty-eight. But I think it's important, I know that looks very small from both of those standpoints, but Bossam was about a year behind Charter. And there was some engineering and some paperwork that has to happen before they can really start. And so, this is just kind of a breakdown. And this donut here really makes up all of the location points that exist in Jackson County. So, when you look at this, we've talked about this before, but ARDOF creates, it's eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-eight locations, and that is obviously a big portion of our county, and they are working hard on that. So, when you kind of go back up here, you'll see a hundred, one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two of those activated out of those eleven thousand. So, there's a lot of work being done, and it takes a long time in the community that we are in. So, our geographic territory makes it a little challenging, but they are making really great strides. Uh, would also say here, the Great Grant, um, Number One, that is Phase One with Charter. Again, eleven, uh, one thousand one hundred and fifty-six locations were awarded. And I'll put this on this slide, 'cause I think it's important to remind you, the county did provide three hundred thousand dollar match for that grant. And then the red one over here, this one was awarded to Bossam West, and that county match was a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That's six hundred and thirty-six locations.
And those are payable at the end, right?
Yes, they are. So, then the yellow leaves us with the total number of address points that are still remaining unfunded. And we are currently working on, there's two different programs that are remaining through the state office. One is Completing Access to Broadband. We did submit to the state that we wanted to participate in that program, and I think Helene might set that back just a little bit, but we hope to get that underway fairly quickly, hopefully by the end of the year. And then the Stopgap, which is also a state program, and then the BEAD funding, that is coming from the federal government. None of the remaining grants will require match dollars from county. So, that is something really important to note. It's just a matter of who is going to get awarded, what address points, and how we sort of complete this donut, if you will. Does anybody have any questions about broadband before I keep going?
Good job.
The labor of love. I will also say, since I talked to you last, we talked about this a little bit. I've been working on a landing page to give our residents a place where they can go and find information. And so, we've worked hard on that. So, it is kind of still working through some kinks, but I will say, in large part, most of the information is on here. Tells you a little bit about just the broadband initiatives that we have. Talks a little bit about the grant funding programs that exist. The same, same things I just went over are listed on here, but we did some visual maps so people can kind of see, I am in this sort of area, who, who will my provider be? And kind of help them understand that just a little bit better. This is the Bossam West one. Can see it's in the southern end of our county. And then ARDOF, again, it's green, um, covers a lot of our county. But what we also have been able to do is do a broadband locator map, so you can actually put in your address here. And it'll tell you on this screen here, if you are an orange dot, then your provider will be Bossam West. If you are a red dot, you are part of the Great Grant Award. And if you are in the green, you will be part of the ARDOF. So, it'll tell you who your provider is. And it'll also, if, if you're in an area where you are not, um, identified, then we kind of go back here to some of these, what citizens can do, which is take your broadband survey and make sure that people know that you don't have internet or sufficient internet, and what, what does that look like for you? Uh, two other things on this landing page real quick. We did put frequently asked questions, so there's a lot of information on here for frequently asked questions. And then, one question that I have been getting from some of our providers, if you are a part of a homeowners association, it's really important that we have some way of contacting the, I'll say, the person in charge, whether it is, um, I'll say, the president of your homeowners association. But providers, me, if you've got underground utilities, you need to be able to identify that to the provider. So, if they are putting it underground, they can have you identify it. So, we do have a contact form on here for you to be able to put your information in there. So, when Charter, Spectrum, Bossam West, whoever future providers are, say, we're trying to get, deploy internet to this community, to this HOA, do you know who the contact person is? We don't have a really good way of gathering that information right now. We have a little bit better way in the southern end of the county, but we don't have it anywhere else in Jackson County, so this is why we decided to do this. So, we have a really most, more accurate contact person for you. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Yeah, out of that, uh, four thousand, how much were? Four thousand, four six hundred. Where, is that the spread all over the county?
It really is.
It's not southern end or the?
It's everywhere. Yeah. And when you go to this map, you can really dive in to your address, and you can kind, you'll, you'll be able to see. And it'll put a pin on it, and you'll see, am I on this side in the green, or I'm on this side? So, it'll help you be able to identify, am I covered in which grant, or am I not? And if I'm not, please go do a survey.
So, these two or three, whatever you mentioned there, is that, you think that's gonna take care of the forty-six hundred?
The three remaining programs? Yeah, so the Completing Access, we call it CAB. Everybody loves their acronyms, but that, that program is next. I think we'll probably have about a one point five million dollar project. Obviously, don't know how many address points that will hit. But then you'll have the Stopgap, and then you'll have BEAD. And BEAD is really designed, I mean, the whole purpose of BEAD, it's called Broadband Equity Access and Deployment. And the purpose of that is a complete connectivity for the county. So, that's the goal of BEAD, is for us to utilize all these other funds, and the state has to utilize all these funds before they can receive BEAD funding to deploy within the counties. So, that's why CAB has become such a priority, and then Stopgap right behind it, so that we can then get to this BEAD funding. The goal is a hundred percent connectivity with those three programs.
Do you have a, like, a hopeful timeline? You know, a, a timeline that you're hoping to, to have the thing finish?
Well, what I can tell you is, yeah, so. Yeah, so ARDOF, that was a, a six-year program. It is supposed to be completed, I think it's first quarter of twenty-eight. The Great Grants, each of them are two-year timelines. That's why you'll see back on this one, while this great charter is sixty-four percent completed. They, they've got two years to do it, and they're a year in. So, that's why that one moved so quickly. But Charter, on the ARDOF side, is moving a little bit slower, because you look at the county, and you see how much territory they have to cover, and they've gotta do it by twenty-twenty-eight. But I will tell you, they are very active in deploying that infrastructure. Obviously, everybody's gonna have to take a break and address Helene first before they sort of dig back into it. I can't give you a, a timeline, because I don't even know. They've not even identified the timeframe for those three remaining programs. So, obviously, it has to be vetted, and I don't even know if it's gonna be like a two-year timeline or a five-year timeline, but.
With, um, with that map, it shows like some of the areas that are overlapping.
When you zoom into them, they're not.
Some of those areas are already served. Yeah, I didn't know if they'd like piggyback off of other fibers to save time.
They're gonna own their own fiber. They're not gonna piggyback off of another.
You just can't remember all, some of Duke's fiber was already on the phones, like, once Duke banned them.
Yeah, 'cause you can zoom in on any of these address points, and it'll get you to your parcel, and you can say like, okay, that's where I am. I don't have, I'm not marked to receive broadband funding, but what is con, sort of conceivable is ARDOF is gonna serve over here. There's a likelihood that they might serve over here.
Well, I'm not in any of the areas I'm supposed to, but I'm, I've called them as right.
They gotta deploy all of this first, because they're on the clock.
Yeah, exactly.
And they're not allowed to deviate from that until they finish. Yeah. Once they get all of that deployed, then they can sort of come back to areas and go up a road that maybe wasn't originally covered by ARDOF. And they have plans to do that, but they gotta get this other done. Yeah. Yeah.
Good luck.
So, I'm just gonna, I've got a couple of other things. So, business support, there have been a lot of, um, I'll say, various works that we've been doing, one of which is on what we call the R fifty-six hundred Roadlining Project, which is the Highway one to seven project. And I thought it was really important, I, along with a full lot of other people, have been working really hard to work with the businesses that are impacted, that have had to relocate as a result of this road project. And I thought it was really important for you to see the work that we've done. Uh, Julie at the Chamber, Marnie at the Small Business Center, Bernadette at Towne de Silva, we've done a lot of handholding with these business owners to identify a, a business that might be available, that might be a good fit for them, to help them relocate into it. So, there's been a lot of work that has been done, and you can see here, out of the total number of businesses that have been impacted, uh, these numbers, so thirty-three businesses have successfully moved and stayed within Jackson County. Three of those, uh, have found a future site. Also, three plan to reopen that are working on a, a future site. Doesn't have to move, this one is a little tricky, I, but I think it's important to put in here, if you are a business that is impacted, the state, if it meets a certain requirement, has to offer you relocation benefits, but you don't have to move some of those people. So, say they're taking so many of your parking spaces, and normally, your, your line of business, you need a certain number of parking spaces. The town grandfathered those businesses, so that if they were, uh, eliminated a few parking spaces, they could stay where they are. But the DOT standard requires them to offer relocation assistance. But they, as a business, does not have to accept that, and they can stay in their existing location. So, that one gets a little bit tricky, but there are eight of those that were offered relocation benefits that have chosen to stay in their, um, current space. And then, we've had five businesses that have closed. And so, out of all of those businesses, five closing, I'm, I won't say I'm proud that any business closes, but given the magnitude of this project, five is kind of a remarkable number when you sit and look at it. One of those businesses moved outside of Jackson County, they moved to Buncombe County. And then, the other ones had various reasons why they decided to go ahead and close. So, I did wanna point this out, 'cause there's been a lot of work that's been, uh, behind the scenes with, with each of these businesses. Does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, so, next, I wanna talk a little bit about our business retention and expansion. This is a project that has been near and dear to my heart, as a previous Small Business Center Director, working with these businesses to kind of make sure that we are supporting them in a way that is both helpful to them. So, one of the things that we, I've been working on is the creation of a business retention and expansion program, to really make sure that we get them the, the support that they need. Reviewing and updating our incentive policy is also one of the things that I'm working on, and then up, updating our revolving loan fund program. We also are planning to host a business appreciation event in the spring of twenty-twenty-five. And you'll notice that I have these two logos down here on the bottom of my screen, so, um, if you come up here, I'm gonna embarrass Betsy here for just a second. So, Betsy Norwood, she is working with me for, well, until June thirtieth of next year. So, she is, um, working with me, it's a fellowship through the school of government. It is hosted, or I'll say sponsored by LFNC and AmeriCorps. So, she is working with me, and the things that are on this slide right here are the things that I'm getting her to help me with while I work on a lot of the other things. So, I wanted to introduce her to you. Um, I will also say, if Todd Dillard were here right now, he, he would probably come up here and interrupt us right now, because she is part of, it's sponsored by AmeriCorps. During a disaster declaration, in Todd's words, I, I get to take that employee over. So, Betsy, uh, worked in the Emergency Operations Center all of last week, and, uh, I think Todd was very proud of her and all of that. So, I'm just, I'm really excited that she's here. It was really fun to let her experience all that goes on during a disaster, and I will say, I think she learned a lot. But she is an Appalachian Region gal, and so we're really excited to have her here. But I wanted to introduce her to you, and these are some of the priorities that she's gonna be taking on in, within the next, you know, year. So. Thank you. So, she'll be giving y'all some updates as we kind of go forward, but I didn't wanna introduce her. Um, lastly, I just wanted to kind of briefly go over, these are some of the grant applications or funding that has been received in my department over the last little bit, kind of going back to that first slide and the different priorities that we have. So, within housing, as well as childcare, industrial development, our business expansion, and our broadband. So, we have been funded, all of those that are in green, and we have pending grant applications, those that are in yellow. So, just kind of, I won't go into each one of those. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer the specifics behind them, but I thought that that was kind of important, because a lot of it is about capacity building for me and my department, so that is what these funds have helped me with. Can I tell you one more thing? Sorry. I know, it's on Slide twelve, but that was pre-Helene. Um, and so, I just really quickly wanted to give y'all an update on the businesses that have been impacted by Helene. I'm currently working on some disaster recovery support for those businesses that had physical property damage. And so, we've identified, I'd say, a little over a dozen businesses that sort of meet that criteria. And so, I'm working on a way that we can support them. So, I've talked with Darlene and Kevin and, um, several others in Towne Dillsborough and others, just to try and figure out what that might look like. And so, I didn't have time to get it all pulled together today, but I will, hopefully by next week, have something to put in front of you.
You think there's a, okay.
What?
I'm not, uh, you're not prepared. I was gonna ask you, what do you think the economic impact of those dozen businesses is gonna have?
Well, I think in large part, it's a little complicated, because the train also did not, was not able to run. So, even though the businesses that weren't really impacted, that were able to open, didn't see the benefit of the train during that time, and that obviously was sort of a ripple effect of Helene. So, you've got, like Nick was saying, you've got visitors that are canceling reservations, you've, not to mention the ones that physically cannot open, so.
It's, it'll be months from now when we.
Right. And there's a lot of different resources that are rolling out and will continue to roll out in the weeks and months ahead to support businesses in a variety of different ways. And the SBA is the ones who are leading that charge. Mountain Bizmer. Mountain Bismerks uh through, it's it's a state conglomerate, Golden Leaf. Put a lot of money into a program, WNC Strong. And so there are some two bridge loans that are out there for S before SBA releases those dollars. And if you are, were a business during COVID, it's gonna feel very similar to that.
Up next, we have uh Rob Hawke, the Director of uh our County Cooperative Extension and uh Kayla Thomas.
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate it, and Commissioners, thank y'all for having us and County Management and Manager. Appreciate y'all, um, Tiffany, you don't have anything else?
I mean, I can.
Yeah, I can follow up, that's good to hear, so. Anyway, so Rob Hawke, I'm the County Extension Director here at Jackson and Swain and I'll give you um. What we have thus far of twenty twenty-four and some of these numbers go back into uh last September, so. Anyway, um, just our mission, um, we um have been around really since around nineteen fourteen. There's some pictures in our office that have, you know, nineteen twenty uh four Hers. So come over and see those if you haven't already there at the Skyline Service Center, but. We're educational, we're the College of Agriculture and Livestock Science of NC State. And we disseminate information out on agriculture, whether it's animal, horticulture. Whether it's, you know, backyard gardens or row crops, uh and also food and nutrition, food safety. And then also also uh four H youth development, which we'll get to that here in a little bit, so. Couple of highlights, this is not everything that we've done in the last ten to twelve months, but it's it's a highlight of some of the stuff we've done. So the best way to get to know us is really to come to our programs. And and see the uh the interaction of of the staff with the residents uh in the county. But animal agriculture, uh Kendra Fortner is our Animal Agriculture Agent, livestock agent for Jackson Swain. And over the last, um, within the last ten to twelve months, she has worked with forty-two producers. And how we um gauge that is working with the Jackson Swain Cattleman's Association, Jackson. Jackson Makin' and Swain Cattleman's Association. And she has worked with that on livestock health and also pasture management, she has classes uh with that. Uh, some of those are uh one-on-one, some of those are with JMS, the Jackson Makin' Swain Cattleman's Association. That meets monthly at seven during the summer. A big part of Kendra's work in the last several years and it continues to grow is the Youth Livestock Program. So eighteen youth have been um working to learn animal husbandry. They have been preparing for the fair with Swain County, Haywood County, or even the Mountain State Fair and definitely Ma- Macon County as well. So she's been real instrumental in that, along with her volunteers. So Horticulture, uh Minda Dotry is our Horticulture Agent. Uh, both consumer and commercial, consumer um being the the residential folks. Commercial being the uh specialty folks, row crop folks, such as Christmas tree growers, um, DeWilliam Shelton's, those folks. So she's also helped with youth in the last year and she's worked with a hundred and sixty uh youth in learning how to grow plants. Uh, worked with vegetable and plant production, seventy-five um individuals here in the county. And then uh two hundred and ten in commercial operation. And that could be all your Christmas tree folks, uh and and could be your backyard, your farmer market vendors, those folks as well. And then one thing that Minda works really hard on throughout the year, and this is very important. Where else they couldn't um do their occupation, their trade, is certification and pesticide application with NCA state law. So she coordinates, facilitates those, brings in the presenters and teaches herself as well, so. That is extremely important that she has done that, um, and does that a couple of times a year, actually. So four H and youth development, you're gonna hear more from them in just a minute. But they have worked um this past year on some environmental conservation, two hundred and fifty-nine. And that was primarily with the fifth graders, with the Conservation Field Days. She had a success, I'll get to that in a little bit, twenty-five uh youth became more knowledgeable in civic engagement. Which is part of four H and youth development is is developing these youth to be better citizens, whether it's. Animal husbandry or whether it's leadership and becoming possibly a commissioner or chairman or something like that. So learning how to be a better citizen, that's always been the goal for age. Thirty-seven are in our four H clubs and six went to a four H residential camp. Which is good because that's something that we always try to get youth in each county in this state to go to a week-long camp. So they can, as as you well know, as possibly yourself, that's where you learn a lot, you know, when you're young. As far as natural resources, uh, couple of numbers there. We get a lot of wildlife calls, whether it's pears, or bats, or birds, or beavers, you name it, we get the calls. Uh, hornets, right? So yeah, so uh calculating that up, that totaled almost a hundred and thirty citizens. And uh some of these people are desperate, they're widows, they're by themselves, they they can't. Manage a lot of these situations and mitigation of wildlife. So we kind of take that information and help them, we educate them on what they can do as far as doing it themselves. Or move them on to someone that's licensed in a Wildlife Damage Control Agent that can go help them, so. We got a lot of wildlife. So also different calls, uh, almost, you know, over two hundred folks there, increase knowledge of their natural environment. That was with Conservation Field Day. We teach weather, our office teaches weather at these with the Swain, uh, the Saltwater Conservation District Field Days up in April. And then every Arbor Day, we try to celebrate with some type of um native tree and this this past April, we did elderberry seedlings. A lot of people use those for um edible landscapes and things like that. And then uh back past uh some years now, we've been honoring veterans. With giving out Norway spruce, something as a memorial, Evergreen Memorial. To plant and honor their veterans, whether it's a family member or someone they knew in in their community. So that's, we'll do that again November eleventh here coming up. Family Consumer Science, we have not had an agent, oh, I hate to report this, uh, going on. Almost two years, so however. Couple of weeks ago, we did interview for that and we're working with HR on trying to hire that person ASAP, so. But the extension of Community Association Clubs are definitely uh still active. We've got about twelve uh members that participate in that, they've been around a good while. They've done basket making classes, chair uh repair classes, arts and crafts, they do a lot of that. Even though we haven't had a Family Consumer Science agent, so we do get the calls primarily Frida. And then she'll use the FCS agent over in Haywood or in Macon County. And we'll get the information for the citizens here in the county and then get get it out via the help of those two counties, so. Um, we've been often ski walking for a number of years and that is something we just do. Uh, because of uh an aging population, but also to get people out to meet community members that they can walk with. And then the landscape that we live in is very mountainous, as you know, so creates stability and support. So that's something that we teach each spring. Uh, here and we did it on teeth uh park there in Dillsboro. As far as physical resources, um, we can't do without money, which the county is very gracious, giving us uh line item budgets. And we appreciate that to help us do our programs to buy supplies and materials, but the um. And they're gonna talk here in just a minute, but they required the Shooting Sports, which is a brand new uh four H club, uh almost twenty-seven hundred dollars. Uh, was acquired for that, that club. They can speak more to that, lots, a club almost raised six thousand. And then um some people just donate out of their, you know, right there on the spot. Two hundred and fifty dollars uh for a camper to go to to residential camp. Thirty-six volunteers donated uh over fifty-seven hundred dollars worth of in-kind services and extension. It's hard to do these clubs, especially four H and things like that, uh, so volunteers. Success stories, as far as animal agriculture, uh Kendra Fortner with the Cattleman's Association. She does a lot of beef cattle production, a small ruminate, uh also poultry and pasture management. And that included this year, hay production, also what programs are available for cattle producers with farm service agencies. She did one on the Asian long-term ticks, uh and also the HPAI and dairy herds. And that was about twenty-five producers she worked with. Also, a big thing that came under law is as far as vaccinations, only um licensed vets can sell those. She did an update on that for the cattle producers here in Jackson County. And it used to be they could just go buy it at the feed and seed store, that's not the case anymore, so she's worked with that. So and then also, uh, along with four H agent, uh Kayla Thomas. Kendra has worked with the Youth Livestock Groups. And twenty-three, we had twelve participants, this year we had fourteen participants. And they have shown locally uh from Haywood to Swain County to Macon County and even some went over to the Mountain State Fair. So as far as um and County Manager Kim King was involved in this. And uh Kayla did the Jackson County Summer Campers and that was a program called Taking Community Action. And then they basically, uh, that was a civic engagement. And that was the the summer campers out at uh Colley Rec Center. And one youth, right, can you, can you speak a little bit about that, what that youth did with DSS?
Yeah, so one day at camp, we did like a simulation for our community issues. So I tried to sim- like use issues that are actually happening in Jackson County. So one of them was lacking a um proper foster home um for foster kids in need. And um we got talking about that and um one of the campers. Um, actually, the Director of the Board of Election, Amanda Allen's son. He decided to take some action, I guess that that one really stood out to him. And um he went to his church, um, his pastor and um asked if he could. If they could do something to raise money for this foster home or um through Department of Social Services. And so the church uh decided to put on a fundraiser and they raised money from the members. To um provide, provide equipment for the foster children, like duffel bags and. Um, pillows and maybe some air mattresses. Um, so he raised money for that and then uh they hosted a dinner for the Department of Social Services staff at the church as well. So he really uh took it a step further and did something, which was awesome.
Well said, earlier than I could have done. So um there's, it's not all fun and games at summer camps, these these youth uh with four H involved. Goes out and grabs them and then brings them into these situations, they can learn about their community and how they can help. One thing, uh, embryology has always been a big part of four H. And Kayla, um, she did a kind of a, an evaluation from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. And it showed uh an immense improvement of the students' knowledge. And in the twenty twenty-four program, the students' average know- knowledge test score increased nineteen percent. So from the pre-program test, the score of seventy-five percent increased up to ninety-four percent, so. Embryology is also one of those um programs that's uh goes into the schools and and works um with them. At half for a long time. Horticulture, uh, one thing that Minda Dotry uh works closely with is Christmas tree growers. And I guess this is one update on the Helena uh aftermath. In years to come, um, we could see a quite a bit of more phytaphra. The bacteria in the soil being spread with heavy rainfall, um, excessive rainfall. So that's something that the Christmas Tree Specialists, we've heard on a couple of Zooms the last week, that that's something that they are worried about. So Minda will be kind of troubleshooting that and scouting and monitoring that as as time goes on, that's something that. Didn't happen immediately, but it could happen in another year where that's gonna happen. One thing that Minda did do, she worked on a recommendation for specific fertility treatment. And one grower took that information that uh Minda provided, they implemented the strategy. That problem has been resolved and the grower is very pleased with the result. So that's a, it's a big um plus for that producer. So and also as time goes on, these relationships with agents and the citizens grows. And they can then work on future problems and that could be for top. Master Gardeners was absent here for several years after Creosity Breeden Camp left, but now Linda has revived that. And sixty percent of the participants uh in in their participants increased in in their knowledge. Uh, in their written exam, they scored eighty percent or better. So those will eventually become volunteers um for her to help with the, especially the residential growers, so. So now I want to, any questions? Okay, alright, so I would like to uh. Now give, one of the big uh success stories is four H this year in Jackson County. So I'll introduce Kayla Thomas, she's a four H agent, and then also our Administrative Assistant, uh, Freddie Childers. And they'll come up and give, introduce the volunteers here and give you an update on the Gritty Triggers Shooting Sports Club.
Hello, I'm Kayla Thomas, I'm the four H agent, I saw you guys a few months ago. Um, when I was first telling you about the Shooting Sports Club. So yeah, we have Frida Childers here, she's our Administrative Assistant, she's been really helpful with getting our club started this year. Uh, she's also really knowledgeable about firearms, which I'm not, so I'm glad to have somebody who is. Um, this is Tater Connor on the left, he is one of our coaches. And then Jeff Barrett is one of our volunteers. So uh our volunteers have been invaluable this year, so they're, they've all been awesome, plus those that aren't here. So I just wanna give you guys an update on our Shooting Sports Club, what's been going on this year and what our needs are right now. Okay, so as you know, this year was the first year of the Jackson County Four H Shooting Sports Club, Gritty Triggers. Overall, we had eighteen participants, which is a pretty awesome number for a first-year four H club. Um, we also had two main coaches and eight volunteers, so we have plenty of caring adults helping the kids sharpen their skills and stay safe. Over the summer, the club practiced shooting rifle and shotgun twice a month at the Jackson County Coon Hunters Association's uh property. On August tenth, the North Carolina Four H Shooting Sports West District Competition happened in Hope County. And fourteen of our uh members competed and seven ended up qualifying for the state competition. Um, and which was held in Richmond County on September fourteenth. Our club actually brought home five medals from the state competition. Um, so Brayden Messer is one of our members, he placed number one as a junior individual rifle in the entire state. Um, AJ, AJ Frady, Sawyer Presley and Cade Rice placed number three as a senior team in shotgun in the state. And Hunter Woody placed number two as a senior individual in shotgun in the state. After competing in a tiebreaker where he went head-to-head against six other shooters and eliminated them over a twenty-one round. Shoot-off to earn the number two spot. So I wasn't there, I wish I would have gotten to see that, but I'm sure it was very exciting. Um, so these individuals are now qualified to compete at the national level next summer. And which is is just wild for a first shooting sports club for the first year, so we're very proud of them for that. So we have some really talented kids in this group, obviously, as well as kids that are interested in shooting sports and they just want to learn. So this club has provided an opportunity to kids to develop life skills and discover their passions, which is what four H is all about. This new club was obviously needed and valued by our community and we all hope it continues for many years. Next year, we anticipate the club growing larger with more participants, volunteers, coaches and shooting disciplines. We have also applied for grants that will help us um in providing equipment to our participants in the future. So the main thing that our club needs in order to continue successfully is a permanent range location. Um, which we're hoping that you all can help us with. Um, the property that we practice on this uh this summer is no longer available. Um, so we're looking for somewhere that's centrally located. Um, so we're looking for somewhere that's centrally located where the, uh, the club can hold business meetings. And practice and where noise will not be a concern, obviously. If this space is secured for our twenty twenty-five season and beyond. We can apply for grants that will provide funding for the development of our range. So thank you for supporting and caring about our club. We are very excited for what's in store in the future and we hope you'll consider helping us secure a range location. So if you have any questions, all of us are here to answer.
How'd that go at the Coon Club? Enough space up there for yous? Didn't think so.
Junior kids shoot twenty-five yard rifles. We had room for it. But the senior kids shoot fifty yards and we just couldn't have it. We got, we worked it out. We could shoot shot. So that worked alright. But that's what, if we can find property, we need. Five to ten acres somewhere that, but depending on the layout of the land. Cause like I said, we need a twenty-five yard, a fifty yard range and a skeet range. For skeet range, you're shooting up more, you need a, you know, it'd be nice to have a hillier mountainous backdrop. Shoot into. So it doesn't all have to be flat. We need at least a seventy-five yard probably. Flatter areas you can ever shoot.
And we're also wanting to add other disciplines such as archery and possibly pistol and stuff like, we've had a.
Air, air rifle, air, air gun.
We've had a big interest in archery. So that would be something that would have to go in the range also.
You anticipate we're gonna have those programs. I know several people have asked me about them.
We just didn't have the instructors for them. Cause we have to go through a four H course to be in it, uh, to be an instructor to do it. We've got someone that's interested in it and those courses are in the spring. So hopefully in the spring we'll have a, have a archery instructor.
Yeah, for sure.
We, I've been looking for property. Um, we've been looking. It's gonna take some time though to find the perfect piece of property. Cause, cause of noise and, you know, just have enough space around it where you're not gonna hit a house or something like that. I think, we, I mean, I personally, I'd like to see, uh, you know, a permanent shooting range. Not only just for, I mean, it'd be for, for H, but for the whole county, you know?
Yeah, that, that was our goal. Cause there's some, there's actually some really good grants to pay. To build the range if you have the property. So that's, uh, you know, and that's what we were talking about. Having, you know, of course, four H, high school's got an excellent shooting team. Give them a place they could use it. And then maybe have, uh, some over the public section.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Thank you for all that you've done. I mean, it's great that the kids are able to compete in these alternative sports.
Yeah, absolutely.
The, the boy that won second place in the state in shotgun had never shot a shotgun until he come to us.
That's wild.
You know, you, you have some natural, so he's.
Most of our kids actually are not even on the high school shooting team either. And a lot of them, this was the first time they had ever shot skeet or anything. So it was a good opportunity for them to learn how to handle firearms as well.
We enhanced the s- the high school shooting team quite a bit. We're probably gonna go back to lean down some new ones.
Yeah, so y'all needing instructors?
Always.
Uh, yeah, we need, uh, cause you can only, I mean, you, you can go get as many disciplines as you want. But an instructor has to be, one instructor per discipline has to be on site for those kids to go practice. Now you can utilize rest as volunteers for, for your safety. But all we had was two instructors this year, rifle and shotgun. So we do have somebody that's going to, well, it's interested, but if you've got some, you know, it's interested in archery.
Well, I've got two people that might be interested in pinga.
Taylor Freda and they give you, I don't know if the dates are published yet.
Not yet.
Mr. King, have we? I think me and you'd had a conversation about it, but. Are we able to partner with, uh, Forest Service to see if they have a piece of property? It would be, it would be used for a shooting range?
I reached out to Troy Waskey. He's the ranger district for the Nantahala District. And they're not issuing any more permits for shooting ranges. Like the ones that they've got, all the, from my, from my understanding, it's gonna be lit. Uh, we will have to look at different places. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't get some congressional folks involved and, you know, with, with limited. Limited land base, especially in certain parts of our, our county. Uh, so we can definitely try that. Uh, but right now on the, that level of bureaucracy has kind of shut that down as far as a permitting process, so.
It wouldn't be the ideal place, cause you know, you get a place, a bunch of Forest Service property, you're not. Around houses typically, I mean, some houses, but. Thank you. Yeah, thank yous for coming too.
Yeah, of course. We were supposed to have our, uh, barbecue fundraiser this past Saturday. Maybe you heard about it. Um, it's gonna be a big, big deal, but you know, with all that's happened, we postponed it. So hopefully, we don't, we're not sure when it's happening, but, um, please, please come out when it is. Everybody needs their barbecue.
So if our lead volunteers are actually out on storm relief. So until we can kind of get things settled down and get everybody back together, it may be a little bit, but we are still gonna do it.
And, uh, one more thing that's not related to shooting sports to add to what, uh, Rob was saying about summer camp. Um, there was, we did a collaboration with the Board of Elections and the kids designed, um, voting stickers. And one of the kids won. So on, when you vote, you'll, you'll get a sticker with his design this year. Yeah.
That's great.
Alright, thank you so much.
Moving on now to, uh, Chad Parker in Public Works.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight, uh, to talk about our Jackson County Public Works Department. Before I start, I just wanna say, um, I say this all the time, we really appreciate, I really appreciate. And we are blessed to have the employees that we have in Public Works. And I know you would look at me and say, we have to have these employees, cause you, you have all these things to do. And I understand that, but what I really mean is we are blessed to have the skilled people. And the people that are willing to go the extra mile to get things done. And I'm gonna talk a little bit about that as we go through this. I know this presentation looks a little long, so hopefully I can go through it. Probably pretty, we'll try to talk fast, get through it. It's all, it's for you guys, but you know most of these things. It's also for the county citizens to be able to see what we do and how many of us there are and how much it costs the county for us to do what we do. So, um, but I, I, we have, we would miss the people that we have, that we've had for a long time in these departments. They're very skilled people and, and it's very hard to find those people to replace them. When we compete with some of the other agencies in the, in the county and in the region. So I just wanted to say that they are very much appreciated by myself. Um, I'm, I've, I've said to Kevin even today, um, I'm, I'm here, I'm privileged to be a part of Public Works. A bunch of folks that really, uh, go the extra mile and are very skilled and knowledgeable of what they're doing. And, and, and so that, with that, we can do what we do to help in some of the projects that we've been working on. And like I said, I, just like everybody else, I wanna give a little bit of an update at the end on what happened during Hurricane Helene. And how our folks assist, our folks assisted there. Um, but we are the Jackson County Public Works Department. And if you don't know, our, we have five different departments. Uh, that are in Public Works, the garage, green energy park, grounds, housekeeping, maintenance and solid waste. Okay, so, um, and just wanna give an overview each department. Um, the garage is located at Skellon Services Center. Um, and we have, uh, uh, I have a lot of pictures that I do and when I do this full, uh, blown, uh, show. Which I think, uh, Commissioner Edson was in, uh, the Citizens Academy. Um, and so, but anyway, we're responsible for the repair and maintenance of around two hundred fifty-seven vehicles. Forty-six trailers and, uh, around a hundred and two pieces of equipment. Those are different things like lawn mowers, weed eaters, things like that. Um, and also the grounds department helps in, in repairing and maintaining those as well. Uh, we have a work order system that we keep up with all of our work orders that either citizens or, uh, the other departments. Within the county, uh, request from us. And so that, that system is in place and we keep up with that as far as the number of work orders annually for this department is six fifty. Um, what they do is welding and fabrication as needed on things. Air conditioning certified, so they can actually repair their conditioning systems and vehicles. Um, tire changing, brake repairs and then mighty, uh, minor body repairs. And then they also do the state vehicle inspections for all the county vehicles. Um, and of course, just normal PM services for vehicles, oil changes and things of that nature. Um, we don't do a lot of the major transmission changelovers and things like that. If there's, those are normally, uh, contracted out. Uh, budget for that department's three hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, green energy park, uh, may have a little, I think, we're gonna have another time when they come in and maybe present on their own. But just wanted to briefly go over what, that, what they do down there. Um, we have, uh, glass blowing artists come in and they, uh, blow glass using the furnaces that are heated. Using gas and electric furnaces to be able to do that. And then blacksmithing, uh, there's some, uh, forges down there. Where they utilize those to be able to do some blacksmithing and, uh, make different things out of metal. A lot of welding goes on. There's all kinds of different things that they, they make from, from that blacksmithing department. Um, also we have pottery. Um, most of those are wood-fired. Those are not fired by the methane, uh, from the landfill. But they are wood-fired and a lot of pottery, uh, there. Uh, we have, actually those were moved off-site when the animal shelter was built up to where the Stafford Street Cycling Center is now. Familiar with that, uh, campus. But, uh, they, they have two large wood-fired kilns up there. And we have three employees. We recently hired a new director there in the last few months. And, uh, full-time employees, one part-time employee. That budget's around three hundred fifty thousand. Uh, grounds department, um, in ground, we, we do mowing and we maintain, uh, about seven hundred thirty acres. Of county property. These are, include recreation, athletic fields, uh, all county buildings and facilities. Public school campuses. Um, and also we do around four hundred or fourteen hundred work orders there annually. We, uh, that, that can be, you know, mowing whatever, like the justice center when it gets mowed, that's one work order. Um, so you can get an idea of how many different things they, they do. Um, sometimes we get called out for different things on properties, just to cut a tree and just, just various things. But I'll go through a little bit more in detail on the slide. Um, we, we have landscaping, beautification of the county facilities, uh, snow and ice removal, uh, from all the county facilities. And then we assist with emergency management during disasters. Uh, again, I'll go into that a little bit more in detail. Lead and assist maintenance projects. Herefore, uh, a lot of this comes in. We have carpentry, masonry, roofing and concrete that a lot of these folks in, even in, in grounds, they choose to be in rounds. But they have the knowledge and skills to be able to do these other things. Very important to have those folks and the, and the manpower to be able to do things like that with, with folks that, that know how to do those projects. Uh, we have seventeen full-time and two part-time employees and the budget is around one point, close to one point six million. Um, just to go into a little bit of detail about mowing and grounds. Again, with county buildings and properties, parks and rec facilities, all the public school campuses, walking trails, hazardous tree removal. And then again, they do PM and repair of, of the equipment like lawn mowers, wood, oil changes and things like that. And as far as, um, just fixing blades and fixing parts and machines, I've seen them take them apart and, and repair. Different parts in the engines and things. So they do a lot with that. Landscaping, installing, uh, and maintenance, um, we have two greenhouses. Uh, and when I say installing and maintenance of, of the plants and then, uh, we water and fertilize those. It's, it's really, once you plant these plants, we have irrigation systems in a lot of areas. So you're familiar with those type things. There's a lot of watering that has to go on with these plants to keep them alive. Especially when it's been a dry year like this, with the exception of the hurricane coming through. Uh, pruning and transplanting. And then, uh, these are ones that most people will recognize as the flags for heroes that are, that we put up on the courthouse hill. And also down at Mark Watson at the monument. And then, uh, the Christmas trees that are put up on the courthouse, the old courthouse hill in, in December. Also, it's, it's something that they've put together and do that every year. The snow and ice removal, we do, uh, all county facilities, examples of that, Justice Center, nine one one, S R Cs. Fire department, rescue squads. Uh, we do all the roads, the parking lots and the sidewalks. And then we also do that for the school system, so they can get back opened up. And that's the roads and the parking lots. Uh, their housekeepers do their sidewalks there. Also, uh, again, we assist emergency management. This was prior to Halloween and didn't have a whole lot in here. But, uh, we assist them with private roads and emergency situations. A lot of times in prior events, like snow events or ice events. Or, uh, whatever, we would, we would go with them and help them cut trees out if they needed to get into a citizen's home. To be able to, to do something as far as an emergency there. Um, and I remember we've, we've hauled firewood, did different things, uh, different things during those snow events for, for emergency management. And, uh, just like Tiffany said, when an emergency is declared, Todd, uh, you know, tells us, hey, I need your folks. And, you know, that's no problem with me, obviously. And we're glad to help. We're always glad to help with that. Um, and then, uh, like I said, snow, ice and wind, floods. Uh, we just, we do a lot of logistics. And like I said, I'm not gonna take a lot of time right there, but at the end, I wanna tell you a little bit more about that. And what, what they did in the grounds department and what happened in maintenance and some of the other departments. Uh, housekeeping, of course, this is providing, uh, cleaning and sanitation of all the county facilities. Uh, excluding the, the recreation park and river access areas. Those, those were done by the recreation park themselves. Uh, so we don't do those, but we do all the county facilities, twenty-three county facilities, uh, twenty-one total staff, twenty-one full-time. That's, that's in typo. There should be twenty-four, but twenty-one full-time and three, uh, part-time people. And they, the air, hours vary on the, the, uh, housekeeping staff. Anywhere from six AM to one AM. We have, uh, people in, in various, uh, uh, times at the buildings. And also Saturdays and Sundays, because we have operations on those, those days as well, obviously the rec park. And, uh, the detention center, there are places that are open, obviously, all, all, uh, days of the week. That budget's around one twenty-seven million. Uh, maintenance department, uh, of course we repair and maintain all the county facilities and equipment located within all buildings. Uh, forty-seven buildings now. You say, well, we only had twenty-three in housekeeping, we got forty-seven in maintenance. There's a lot more buildings. And that we maintain that don't require housekeepers, um, like your S R C sites. Uh, we don't necessarily go out and clean those with housekeeping, but we do have to go out and maintain those. Uh, twelve hundred, uh, work orders annually, uh, some of the different things, uh, HVAC plumbing, electrical painting. Carpentry, masonry, roofing, concrete work. Um, and then also, I, I don't, a lot of people don't understand that counties actually do state road signs. Uh, as far as the name of the, not naming, but the, the road names that, that tell you the road names and the state road number. We actually make those and, and put those up. Uh, I don't know, a lot of people, I don't know if they know that. But, um, we, they find that out when they call the DOT, because a lot of people would think that the state does that, but actually the county does that. Um, and we do that in our office. We actually make the signs and put those up. Um, Cashers Water Works is a water system that we have in, in the Cashers area. Uh, and it provides mainly, I think it was purchased mainly to provide water to our county facilities in that south end of the county. But, uh, we also have a few different, uh, other facilities that are on that system that are not county-related. Um, we can, I maintain any sidewalk that's outside of, uh, the downtown or incorporated areas. If it's a sidewalk that the DOT has, has put in place, then technically we are responsible. then technically we are responsible. Mike Poston has made me very aware of that. We are responsible to take care of those sidewalks. So but it's not a burden right now. Now, at some point, those sidewalks, when they, when they age and they get deteriorated, it will definitely become more of a, a project for maintain, maintaining those. But for right now, we just kind of keep them cleared out and make sure when there's snow and ice that we keep those cleared off for people to be able to walk on. We, when, something that we can't even house, we contract it out. And so those, we, we assist contractors. A lot of times at least we have to be there to, to be with them if they're going through a building. Some of those things are like backflow inspections, elevators, generator repairs and sprinkler systems and alarm systems in buildings you'd have to have a certification for that we do not have. But we do assist them in those situations. Again, the maintenance assist, emergency management during disasters. The specific projects I've listed here are, we just finished up the slab on the emergency management storage building. It's the new building that's being built, which we had some other people in other departments that helped us with that as well. Again, we have a vast number of people in different departments that actually have skills to be able to do a lot of the things. And so it has been able to save the counties money to be able to utilize those folks and very willing, very, very happy to help whatever we need to do. So as far as the license plate agency that we have, that we relocated to the Skyland Services Center, we remodeled that and finished that space so that they could move into that space. That was a project that was done in maintenance. This is an older one, but the Mark Watson Monument where the, the founding documents are located down there as far as those replicas, we rebuilt that from, from the ground up with, with help from some other agencies. But mainly, our folks are involved in that. We built life jacket holding stations at the river put-ins. We built a wash bay a few years back. We currently use that for our equipment. Washing and any fleet vehicle that needs to be washed can utilize that facility as well. We remodeled the bathrooms at Mark Watson for handicap accessibility a few years ago. Remodeled the exterior and painted the DOA and cashers, sidewalks and shelters. There's been a lot of those that have been put in place in cashers. If you walk around the rec park now, all those sidewalks, our folks did that in, in public works. Then also, we are working on some things for animal shelter acoustics to be able to dampen some of that sound. Mr. King has purchased some things. We are installing those. We haven't got them up yet. We're working on getting those up. We're waiting on materials to come in to, to install them. But that's my project working on. We also redid the East Laporte picnic shelter. I don't know if you had a chance to go by there, but it was getting and deteriorating. And so we were able to do that. And then also, if you go into the courtrooms, some of our guys redid the clerk stations, clerk corp stations in the courtrooms. And they look very nice. So just a few things. I'm real quickly just go through a few things in HVAC. They do quarterly preventative maintenance such as filters, greasing, coal cleaning, repairs on units, plumbing, mainly on stopping drains, main lines. A lot of times, especially in the detention center, we have that quite a bit. It seems like place water and drain lines when needed and toilets and fixtures replace those. Electrical, mainly replacing bulbs and fixtures and things like that. We've converted a lot of buildings to LEDs, running conduit, pulling wires. And we also have installed new service. We leave a lot of, of the bigger electrical projects to contractors though, such as buildings. Like the new building over Todd's, we've got some people looking at that to be able to do that. Painting, they prep. A lot of times you prep work if you've ever painted or done anything like that. It takes a long time to, especially if people have been in the building and damaged walls and things like that. It takes a lot of time. But they, they do a very meticulous job at that. Sheet rocker, caulking, pressure washing, painting and exterior and interior. Carpentry, remodeling, as I've mentioned, adding walls and doors, cabinets. We assembling desks and chairs. A lot of that when furniture is ordered, we, we help with that. We build dog kennels, sheriff's department canine, we've done that in the past. And actually, I think they poured a pad to leave for one of those people to be able to have a canine at their house. Masonry, of course, laying block, breaking rock. We have skilled people can do that in-house. Roofing, patching, repairs, roof, roofing replacements, larger roofs, we contract that out. A lot of the smaller stuff we can do, especially with metal and the shingle. Concrete, forming grading, pouring slabs for sidewalks and footers. We, we do a lot of that. Against state road signs, we do make signs that are the state signs and those are free. As far as us putting them up, we have to, someone has to let us know that that's down and we'll go out and take care of it, make the sign and get it put back up. But the private ones, we also do those for private roads. They do have to pay and contact the finance office to be able to over one of those signs. And then we can do the same thing there. We don't, we don't put those signs up, but we do make them. And then we, we always mark grade one-one and then we'll install those, the posts and sign. Now, solid waste, again, this is probably things that y'all, y'all know, just to go through, eight staff recycling centers in the county. One unstaffed site, which is at Soco Mountain. And then we have one transfer station, one closed landfill. Lot of contract management and solid waste for waste disposal, recycling, the hauling through the landfill and hauling from the SRC's to the transfer station. We have the typical things like tire, white goods and brush grinding that we, we contract out. We also have environmental enforcement. We have a part-time person there. Go a little bit more into that here in a second. Education is, we have a person that's our recycling coordinator that does that. We have seven full-time employees in solid waste, two part-time, and that budget is around five point four million. Revenue streams for the solid waste department are solid waste availability fees that you see on your taxes. Those are based on the number of bedrooms in the house and the sliding scale. So if you have a two bedroom or a one-bedroom house, it'd be, or actually, I'm sorry, two to three is eighty, I believe. And then it goes up from there. So the tax office actually bills that out with, with the tax bill. So you see that on your tax bill. That money goes directly into solid waste fund, does not go into anything else in, in the county. So that, that money, we keep that into the solid waste fund so that we can provide solid waste services to the county. Other ways we, we gain revenue is tipping fees at the transfer station. We charge tipping fees on construction and demolition and brush. We've had a lot of people over the years ask, why do you charge for C and D? And why can't we just throw it away free like we do our residential waste? We also charge for commercial waste, as far as just MSW. But we, we charge for commercial or C and D waste because not everybody's building a house at once. And when you build your house, you dispose of that waste and you pay for it as you're building your house. So if someone's not building a house and has never built a house in the county, you know, it's kind of a way that they, they're paying their own way that, that way when it comes to construction debris. And again, it's a different type of waste for us. The white goods tax, it's a tax that you pay when you purchase a, an appliance. And you'll pay that tax when you purchase that. We get some money back based on the number of sales that are in the county, based on your region, which inside of Jackson County, we would get a percentage of that back. Same thing for scrap tires. There's a tax on scrap tire, on tires when you buy a new set of tires. And you pay that when you buy those tires and you get a portion of that money back to, to help us with the disposal. Scrap tires, I will say, is, is a a drain as far as the money that comes to us. It's, it's never enough. I don't know. If you dealt with this another day, I know you probably has, but as far as for us, it's, it's not enough money normally to take care of it. But of course, the solid waste fund pays for that. But scrap tire money is, is one of those things. It's always a topic that probably need more to be able to, to, to. And part of that is, is there's one company that does most of the scrap tire disposal. So that when we had a separate company, it was a little bit cheaper. But you know, once you have one company doing it, it's, it's fairly expensive. So electronics tax is the same situation. When you buy a computer, a TV, things of that nature, you pay a tax on it. And then we get some of that money back to be able to dispose of that equipment or recycle that equipment. NC, solid waste disposal tax, we pay two dollars per ton for every ton of waste that goes into the landfill. As far as a tax is concerned, aside of the tipping fees, and then we, we get that, some of that money back to help pay for some other things or put some things in solid waste. We also sell our recyclables, metal and paper mainly. We also can sell our combing containers depending on where you, where you're at and, and whatever timeframe you're in as far as what the markets are. Because sometimes things with the recycling markets go up and down, very volatile. Paper's been fairly, over the years, has been fairly steady as far as the revenue source. Just really quickly, the combing of containers are the categories of plastic, glass and metals. We take everything in plastics except for threes and sixes, if you, if you know the number system on, on a plastic container. We also do not take plastic clamshell containers, which are the food containers. Those are, I know a lot of people say, well, it's like it's made out of the same thing, but the, they will not take that as far as a recycling item. And then all items should be rinsed out. We don't expect them to be perfectly clean, but we do ask that people rinse them out. Mainly for attracting this type of year, especially yellow jackets and bees and things like that. Still gonna do it. It doesn't matter if you, it's gonna happen whether you rinse them out or not, but we, it does help. And plus you cut down on the amount of food that's in there. Last, ours, pretty self-explanatory, metal, aluminum and metal cans and loose metal, the jars, steel bottom caps and some foil. And, and again, they should be rinsed out. This is some of the stuff that we recycle. Just really quickly go through paper. Alt reaper we can take except for, unless it's been soiled. I know a lot of people asking about pizza boxes. Those have, if they have a lot of grease on them, we can't take them. They don't want the, the grease and mix them with their paper. So, but if it's a clean pizza box, certainly can take that. Or wax cardboard, we cannot take that. And then metal, of course, all metal items with the exception of a few things, but for the most part, metal, any metal we can take in our, our metal recycling. Used oil and antifreeze fluorescent bulbs we take at all of our staff recycling centers. Same goes for batteries. Lead acid batteries only take to the transfer station, but most people can take those back to the place that they buy a lead acid battery and change those in. Exchange those for, for a core charge. We do take cooking and vegetable oil at all the SRC sites. Mercury thermostat, you see as many as anymore when you do a recycling program there and then our electronics program. I'm just gonna hit on a couple of these numbers. These are our last fiscal, fiscal year numbers. Waste that we took in to the county and disposed of was around thirty-nine thousand tons. Our paper is around a little over thirteen hundred tons and our containers are right at seven hundred tons. And you can see some of the other amounts here that these are yearly amounts that we take in as far as from our citizens. But be from commercials or whatever. We, Western Carolina in the past bailed their own cardboard. They started bringing that to us and we expect to see the paper numbers go up just a little bit this next year. Outreach events that we do in solid waste, we call it cleaning up the mountains. We do it in the spring and fall. And that is so that people can, can adopt, not, not adopt a highway. It's not that program, but you can take on a road in your community to be able to pick up that roadside from litter and, and help clean that road up. It's, you're not really signing a contract to adopt a highway, which just, if you feel the need in your community or see a need and you want to adopt that stretch of highway for that particular event, we do in the spring and the fall. In the event, the fall of this year is October twenty-seventh to November ninth. And if someone would like to participate in that, they can call the recycling coordinator and we provide the bags, gloves, the pickup sticks, all the different things for that event, for, for people that want to participate in that. The number there is eight two eight five eight six zero four six nine. And we also, we did do one this year because the recycling coordinator, we were changing recycling coordinators, but we, we do a household hazardous waste event usually in April. Again, we didn't do it this year. The last year, the previous year we did it, we got about six thousand pounds of paint-related materials, a lot of, a lot of paint. A lot of questions about paint all the time. Also twenty-four hundred pounds of latex paint outside of the pool base and other types of paint-related stuff. Seven hundred pounds of aerosols and then two fifty-five gallon drums of, of flammable liquids. We also have a free shred event that we do once per year. I know the credit union does one and also the Department on Aging does a shred event. Normally those are done in the spring. We do ours in the fall so that we can have a couple a year. Our shred event this year for the citizens is on October twenty-fifth. And it will be here in the parking lot from eleven to two at the Justice and Administration Building. So anybody that has documents that are sensitive documents, they would like to have shredded, they can bring those here and on that date. And there will be a shred truck here to do that onsite. Residential compost bins, we've done this for a few years. We have fifty dollars is what we charge for a compost bin. We pay, we pay more than that for those. But we feel like it's a good thing to be able to get those out into the hands of the citizens at their house so they can actually do composting at their house. So we've, we've been selling those at a reduced rate to the citizens. And if they're interested in that, they can also call the eight two eight five eight six zero four six nine to be able to, to get one of those. I don't think we have any more right now, but we're in the process of getting more of those. School outreach, we are trying, we are, well, actually the field days, I know Rob mentioned those. We, our recycling coordinator goes to those every year and that, every school brings a fifth grade class and you go through that. We have a recycling and litter station, information station set up at that. And also, the, the recycling coordinator that we've hired is an ex-school teacher and is talking to the principals and trying to get in the second and the third grade, third grade classes for recycling and litter information. The Dilmar landfill is the closed landfill that we operated, opened in the seventies and it closed in nineteen ninety-six. And originally belonged to the town of Silva and the county acquired it sometime, I think in the nineties. And then it closed again in ninety-six, but even with that closure, we still require, are required to monitor the groundwater and methane for thirty years. And you know, that's coming up, but we, with that monitoring, they can always continue to tell you that you have to expand that and continue on. But the initial was a thirty-year closure. And we, we do groundwater monitoring is semi-annually. And then we do methane testing around the perimeter of the landfill every quarter. And so, and then currently the methane is used as flared. We have a flare at the bottom of the landfill or it's used at the Green Energy Park. And now, of course, you, you know, but again, for the citizens, the, the landfill, the old landfill, top of that, one section of that is a dog park now. And people can bring their dogs there and let them use, let them roam inside the dog park. And then also the other part of the landfill is a walking trail on top of that. So that is what we have in a nutshell, but I wanted to go through a couple of things. Again, several departments helped in various ways during Hurricane Helene. And still today, actually doing some things that, that emergency management had asked about. The Green Energy Park, we had that staff. They, there wasn't as much going on. And obviously at the Green Energy Park with all the flooding and all the different things happening. So they volunteered and helped in other areas. So they went to the warehouse that we had for food distribution and helped with that also. I think one of them was in cashers and helping up there as well with the fire departments and, and just distributing things. So they helped with that. We had a few housekeepers that had to do some extra things for us as far as cleaning. And so we were thankful for that. And then in, in maintenance, we had mostly, they were checking on generators because of the power outages that we have, that we had throughout the county. And uh, there there was uh especially the one on Sheep Cliff, it it stayed running for about a hundred and thirty hours. They had to shut it down at some point uh to to change, to check the oil and things because it those don't typically run that long. They just get exercised. Months a week and that's about it. Um, and every everything worked with it. Uh, those, if you don't know those power. Uh, the repeater towers for communications or radio communications. So, uh, and then also Balsam side ran for one sixty, one hundred sixty-four hours non-stop. And but they they worked and they they did what they were supposed to do. So our guys were had main, we we maintained those all along just for those. Those events. Um, and then, you know, we didn't have a lot of phone service and radios were a lot of all we had during the during the event. So we we use those radios for our, we have a frequency that we can use and of course we communicated with uh with uh. Emergency management and and others through that. So generators are very important to to keep those running. We also have a. Generator at the uh Cashers Waterworks System, which kept water to our uh uh. Emergency shelters, the the shelter that we opened up up there. So I don't, I did not hear any issues with water. So I I think all that went over very smooth. Um, and and so we were glad, we actually installed that generator just last year. Because of the ice that we had had the previous year and wanted to make sure that we had. I will say one thing about that, um. Uh, shelter that uh we 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 did get a emergency generator that we took up the mountain from Todd, from the emergency management director. To that uh facility, which is the rec center in Cashers. And uh we 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 figured out a way to get it hooked into that because it was. Uh somewhat ready for a generator. I will say in in the future, I mean, we'll talk about it, but. With that being a permanent shelter site, it'd be good to look at having a permanent generator there. And and but that would help instead of having to take one up there. But um, anyway, that had made sure that uh we had uh. Fuel to those generators. We actually had to go in and saw a bunch of trees out, uh among other things to get to them and keep keep the fuel in them when they run that long. Um, and okay, so and then a big help as always in these events is the grounds department. Um, they they do a lot, very eager, very willing to help with anything that that goes on. And again, when Todd needs them, he just calls and says, hey, we need, we need some folks to be able to help with this or that. Um, some of the things that they did, uh it was obviously saw crews. They went in and helped the fire departments to do that. Um, they cut trees for roadways and driveways. Um, and and then they did health and fire checks. They set up and took down shelters. Uh, they moved supplies and equipment uh around different areas that they were working in. This is multiple areas of the county, somewhere stationed in Cashers, somewhere in Quala. As a matter of fact, I think, well, not every fire department, but. Cashers Fire Department, Quala, Tucker CG, uh or Canada, and then uh. That those were the main three, I think, that had some of our folks working out of there. They uh set up message boards and uh and uh moved them around the county. Uh assisted the DOT with uh various things on on especially during the event. Um, not during like as it was happening, right after it happened. Um, and then uh. Of course, one saw crew was dispatched again with all nine one one calls just to make sure they could help them if they needed to get in somewhere. Uh, we did uh. As far as in this area down here, we helped, uh we had direction from the EOC to transport supplies from the. Jackson County Airport and the and from the to the dis- distribution sites um in different locations of the county. There was a lot of water, a lot of MREs coming in on pallets and you're bringing them on on uh the helicopters. And our folks were specifically in grounds, some of those folks were uh designated to that. And trying to get that stuff off the helicopters as quickly as possible so that um they can get the airport back up and running. And as you probably have seen, there's there's a lot of traffic at the airport the last week or so as far as um. People bringing in supplies. So we we didn't wanna hold that up very long. So our folks did a very uh efficient job with that to be able to. Get those things out of the helicopters and move them around the county uh wherever they needed to go to. So just logistics uh for moving things around. Uh, we had, we do have a a small mini excavator that we used to uh be able to clear out the road especially, especially specifically. Cashers SRC site, Staff Recycling Center, there was a lot of trees down there. So we were able to move that out there and do that. Um, we used a lot of our equipment uh in operations here. We moved, we have a forklift at our facility at Skyline Drive. We were able to move that to the warehouse at the emergency management warehouse and. Uh, we were able to utilize that there to be able to unload a lot of the trucks or all the trucks that came in for the most part. Uh. Again, uh I I just wanna say these guys worked. Uh, in the case of the storm, when it happened, a lot of these folks worked twenty-four hours just to be there in case Todd or emergency management needed them. And they, again, they were willing to do that. They go the extra mile to to help with that and and it's it's really appreciated in times of need to be able to do that. Um, and you know, when they do these things, things get behind as far as blowing and things like that, but they've been catching up with that this week and. And 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 trying to get that caught back up. So, uh, but again, that's uh that's some of the things that I'm sure. There's something that I didn't talk about in public works because there's several different things that go on. But um, I try, I really wanna emphasize. That that we are blessed as far as the people that we have and the skills that they can, that they can take care of things in the county and uh.
I'll I'll say this, um, in Cashers, when we were up there at the fire department, I don't know, you may, it may have been a different day. They, they came upon like a a little stretch where they were just kinda hanging out, the the public works, the landscape guys. They ran down, got their mowers and started cutting the grass at the fire department. And then they were over at the, you know, they had a little bit of free time and instead of just. Taking a break, they went back to work. And I mean, it, it's a testament to their, you know, character. Um, but even amidst chaos, they were like, you know what? Instead of sitting around, I'm just gonna go ahead and knock out something. So, great guys.
Yes, sir.
Ninger. Ladies.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Che. Moving on now, we'll um get County Attorney John Cubus uh discussing policy regarding NCGES one four three dash eight oh five.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, so the General Assembly has recently passed a new law. Uh, it actually went into effect on October one. Um, and it's uh essentially targeted at further defining. What is acceptable use of government networks and devices, uh really among all public agencies. So it stretches. You know, to touches all all portions of uh of government, all branches of government, um including local governments. Uh, and it it's gonna acquire some affirmative action by the counties. Um, specifically, it's uh it's legislation which will be a new section of that statute that you mentioned, GS one oh, one forty-three, eight oh three. And it's targeted at not permitting pornography on any county public devices and networks. So, uh, there's there's certain exceptions for the for the law that it encompasses law enforcement and so forth, but. Um, it is gonna require that counties uh do monitor and report any incidents to um what's a newly. Uh, it's a new position of for the state informa- uh, the state chief information officer. And uh counties will need to have a policy in place for these requirements by January one of twenty twenty-five. And and some of this is is gonna overlap with with, you know, current policies that that we already have that exist. Uh, but I'm I'm working with RIT to make sure that we have this new information um in a policy. And the county will need to acknowledge that the the new legislation is out there. Um, that will, you know, govern its employees and its inflammation, uh implementation for, um, you know, the restrictions on the employees. And so my my hope is, and and I have a resolution ready, and my hope is I can get that to you guys uh for your consideration.
Great. Uh, I'm looking forward to seeing it. I don't think we'll have any problems passing that one.
Yeah.
Um, surprised that the state's so behind. I thought that was.
Better better late than never, I guess.
Yeah, I guess so. Is there, uh, are there any questions for Mr. Cubus? All right. Moving on now to, thank you, uh, moving on now to um Canada Fire Department, Community Building.
I just kinda wanted to bring this back up. Um, you know, with the with the recent events, the Canada Fire Department was utilized heavily. And wanted to bring back up um the discussion about the building and the the capital improvement. Uh, Darlene's been working heavily on a capital improvement, the capital improvement plan. Uh, we've been kinda looking at at our projections and so we're gonna be bringing that in November. And that is a part of it, but I wanted to go ahead and kinda get your thoughts on, go ahead and put together the actual, um. Go ahead and do the construction documents or we can go ahead and facilitate, you know, a bid process. So.
I think that's probably a wise thing. I know they're still utilizing that that facility up there. A lot of people don't have power or water.
Yep.
And they're using it for communication and everything. So, um, I think that we need to make sure that we move forward with that. Is there gonna be, I, you know, I'm trying to think back at the original design presented. Will there be more than one shower facility?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I think the way, there's two different renderings. One has um a shower facility with like three per um gender. And then one is individualized bedroom, but then we also have another shower facility downstairs that's been renovated. So we, so there is util, you know, there is definitely possibility uh for that. So. And then the other thing on that, kind of dovetail on that, um, I have reached out to some folks, you know, we have been renting that building for this event. Um, at the Western Builders Building, which we had talked about earlier. Uh, but it just kinda showcases the the need for a regionalized um approach to especially commodities. You know, we have the water and MREs that took about three days to get them here because they're all stationed in Burlington. And so that's why you had the helicopters flying them. Um, there is no central depository. So. I have reached out to Southwestern Commission, um, and also some of the other counties to see if if we couldn't facilitate through maybe a direct grant process. Um, a building maybe in Jackson County that we could utilize, uh specifically for that, for an event. Where we can be a kind of a conduit, not just for our county, but for the region. So, since that has been a problem. So. Um, that's that's all for that one. I got I got other business if I need to. Here, may I go ahead? Okay. Um, let's see. Give me that one. There you go. All right. Uh, I wanted to bring this up. Uh, we had some dialogue with the school system about. Um, the sports lighting at um both the field at the high school and the field at Webster, the softball field at Webster. And they did get a quote of three hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. They would like to utilize. The money that was uh gained through the uh one oh seven right away from DOT. For these two projects. There's a picture of the lot itself, lots themselves. And then this is the. One at the high school. And then this is the one at Webster. So they did a cat analysis of the the placement of these lots and uh. That actually is a pretty good price uh for the lot. They, I think they will be on um wooden poles or maybe utilizing the same poles, but these will be the lots. So.
Didn't we have some discussion on moving or relocating that baseball field? Uh, in anticipation of the track or or moving some parts of the puzzle around to to.
We did, I think that was year before last. And their consolidated plan of all their grounds, and I don't think we really even touched much on that this past January, we had a joint meeting.
Right.
Whether we were to move the, we were discussing about moving the football field down. From the arc center on that law piece of property there. I think that was originally set for two.
Two ball fields.
Two ball fields, but then there was resistance to moving the current ball field down there because of historical.
And it was a track, I think. It was a track to make it a.
Right, and a track down there to, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay.
To me, it just makes sense to have them all at one location, softball field.
That's right. It was to make room for the soft, the girls softball.
That's, we we did.
So where were we?
We hit it just a little bit at the joint meeting.
Well, I don't see throwing money and lights at the current field. If they're just gonna pick up and move down to the other one, it's just wasted money.
That's my, that was my point. If we if we if we just, if you all or us decide to move to try and get everything on one campus. Then it it we might wanna delay the lights. I I'm I'm all for having the light, the fields lit up, but not if we, if there's any potential moving them, that's all.
Right, exactly. The field, the field at Webster, that's basically for the women's softball, they already. It's wild that light is just going to play.
And it it may make sense to maybe move forward with that because that field could be utilized with parks and rec if the girls do go to campus.
Right, right.
Dar- Darlene might could fill in some of the pieces.
If the softball does move back to campus, the lights are at the kitchen or field, they can be used for recreation purposes, literally.
What about the lights still on the current ball field at Spocky Mountain? And if that ball field moves.
They don't have no lights.
Right. Now, with that field also moves to where the other field is, and we wasted money putting lights on that field.
I I feel like they're not gonna move that baseball field.
I don't think they wanna move the baseball field.
Well, they don't, but that's what that piece of property was originally graded for and set up for. That money's already been paid and.
In the capital improvement plan that we're working on to propose, we'll have locations for the facilities proposed.
We gained by that, by the uh expansion of the road.
Three hundred and seventy-one thousand or something.
Five, five hundred.
Five seventy-five.
So it's not gonna take the total amount of that.
And and if we were to, in three years, say these fields got moved, we could take the lights, especially if they're on wooden poles. And make that.
It's like the lights now take on, that even had to move for the one or several projects.
That's DOT.
That's DOT.
Yeah, this is.
I think we're gonna have a lot of dialogue um this next week with the school. Um, one of the things, the the open. Area that we have off to the top, to the left of the high school, um, you know, that's, I think it's where it was slated to do some, the two ball fields. But, you know, if you look at the future, that's really only space to, you know, expand your school as well. So I don't know if you want to utilize that. And I think the school has indicated that they would like to put the track over there. But also in the Clark Nixon study, um, they they drew up a plan where we basically moved the field house to put the track around the ball field. I mean, the football field and keep it where it is, uh which makes a lot more sense because you've got the stand, infrastructure, concessions and all that. So that's one of the things we're proposing in in the capital improvement plan is to keep that part. Leave this where it is. If you did decide to do a a softball field, put it over there uh in in that section or keep it, you know, at Webster. So, but we can get in more dialogue. I just wanted to, one, I wanted to see, um, they have been, uh, that the school has. Has presented this. They would like to move forward with the lots. Um, that way they can get it done by springtime, you know, for the the season. Um, we, it is a win-win at Webster Park, you know, for us, we wouldn't have to put them in. And so it would be a good, good win either way. Um, like I said, you can take them down. They are wooden poles. You can, if they're three-year fixtures, you can definitely relocate the. You can, if there are three-year fixtures, you can definitely relocate those. You know, you'd have that asset anyway. But it, it gets into kind of a back and forth, but, but. So we're just needing to know if, I guess at this point, if we need to put them on budget amendment, we can, we can talk more about it next week. Think about it. And if y'all approve it, we'll put it on the budget amendment. If not, then.
Close thing would be decided on the track. I think it was too expensive to do the grading or field and stuff. At the current location, expand it to make it regulation.
Yeah.
That pushes where the banks are, that's dirt, it's got to be.
We'll have some pictures where they've, they've drawn it up in, at the November meeting and that way. The, the other thing I had was the one oh seven economic development stimulus. For the town of Silva. And I know we've talked about, and we tabled it last time about the A B C. The A B C revenue being split sixty forty, I'm sorry, fifty fifty instead of sixty forty. My recommendation would be just to do an economic stimulus one year at a time and tie it to an economic development initiative by the town and. And just, you know, still, still do the same thing. You're giving them a hundred thousand each year. But during budget time, they kind of give you a plan on what they're, what initiatives they're going to do from an economic development standpoint.
Basically, they reapply every year for.
Basically, it's, it's a grant.
Yeah, five years seems like a long time. I mean, it is a long time.
Yeah, we just, we just saw that most of the businesses have relocated. Some of them outside, but they have reopened. So.
And we've got an election coming up. I know three of us will be here, but we've got nothing against you, Mark, but we've got an election coming up. We do, you know, one, one year at a time. And next year, the two new commissioners can have their input on. You know, on it.
Yeah, I think we can move forward with that. Once you have a patient.
Now, when will that money go in if we approve it? Will it go immediately to them?
It's available now for, yeah.
And we can put stipulations on it?
Yeah.
That's right.
We'll, we'll come up with some, some garbage. Yeah, I, I'll send, we'll send something on and have them look at it. So.
I've been asked by three citizens, Mr. Presley was one of them, you may have got a text regarding the Blue Ridge School. And she listened to our meeting the other night, but like the school board, we didn't officially vote on funding. Or so she, she listened and I didn't, you know, I thought we did.
We, we talked about all of the improvements we wanted to accomplish. Fairview, Blue Ridge, Bus Garage. We never got any feedback from the school, you know. In terms of what they wanted to accomplish other than Fairview. So I, I think it's on the school board. If they need additional funding for improvements, renovations, those, these big capital expenditures. They need to present to us so that we can make that decision.
And I have, I think you all may have been working on some kind of packaging.
Right. It, it'll be in the November, on the November meeting. We've already got it kind of programmed in. And, yeah, it'll be the first, the first in November. And then we will, I did go up to Lee Ridge, did talk to both principal, did take a tour. And got kind of their, their thought process, went back to the Clark Nixon, Darlene's been putting all that together. And it kind of dovetails that they want, you know, performing arts, new gymnasium, that sort of thing also. And I think six or, six or eight classrooms.
There were six or eight classrooms and then I'm working with a, a local person to kind of help with their. Learning kitchen, trying to get it back up to where it needs to be.
So we'll, we'll have that and we can, we can talk more. And then we're also going to, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be. Picking an architect to move all these projects forward. So. I did want to say one other thing. I forgot the recreation department. I knew I'd forget somebody. They were, they definitely were an integral part in the whole disaster. So we'll leave that. Thank you.
Move further business, is there a motion to adjourn? A second. All right. All the favor? None are opposed.